Session for Monday, October twenty-fourth. Three study sessions on the agenda for tonight and up first is Ms. Catherine Sellers with Hoffman and Parker here to talk about the city charter. Good evening, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's see, ah, perfect. Um, just one quick housekeeping item. I think in your packet you had a table. Um, we're not going to talk about that tonight or anything, but that's just going to be a running list that we're just going to update as the process goes. You can use it to make your own notes. If you don't like it, let me know. We'll do something different, but I thought it might be helpful just kind of have that running list of items so you don't have to go back through the presentation if you don't want to. So, all right, let's jump in. So, um, one thing we are going to do a little bit differently tonight is this section thirty-four. If you looked at your charter, it's quite long. Um, it's not broken up, but we are going to break it up into smaller pieces. Um, as usual, some of the, the big question is keep it or rely on state law. So you, that's always an option. But we're, I'm going to do tonight is kind of compare it to state law so you can understand the differences in the recall process and maybe make some suggestions of some limited changes that you might want to make if you don't want to completely repeal it or send it to the voters for repeal. All right, so this first section of thirty-four begins the recall process. And so in Inglewood, the recall process is actually started by an affidavit stating why someone should be recalled from office. It has to be submitted by a registered elector. Um, within forty-eight hours of filing that affidavit, the city clerk mails it to the elected officer to sought to be recalled and who then may basically file a defense statement. Um, after the affidavit is filed, the petition can be, is approved by the clerk for circulation. That's the general gist of it. Um, so in comparison to state law, the process is a little bit different. Under state law, um, a, a petition is just proposed. It also contains that statement of basis for recall, the same word limit. Um, and the form of the petition is actually set by statute. Um, your charter does not contain the form of petition, but the clerk could rely on state law to, to create the form of petition. But we'll talk a little bit about approval of the petition in a minute. So there's no affidavit with the statement for the basis to recall under state law. That affidavit then doesn't go to the incumbent for a defense statement. Um, and then at, there is, it just goes straight on to circulation and the clerk just approves to form. The s- defense statement can come later and will appear on the ballot under state law along with the initial hundred or two-hundred-word statement from the petitioner. Um, one important thing to note is that the petition does not need to be filed by the registered electors in state law. It must be signed, but not technically started by a registered elector. That's a pretty big difference. Um, your charter requires a registered elector to start the process. Any questions before I, okay. So, um, the minor suggestions that we are, um, or minus, minor, so the minor revisions that we are suggesting is to put in some timeframes in here. Um, currently, there's no t- set timeframe for the defense statement to come back and the city clerk then to authorize the petition to be circulated for recall. So, you know, recalls are highly political, right? And if, you know, there could be an argument, well, I haven't given my sworn statement yet, so you can't authorize the petition for recall and there could be a lot of political wrangling over that. And this would just clarify that when these things had to happen. So there's not pressure on the clerk. The clerk can just, has a timeframe and can move on and say, um, we authorize the petition for recall. Um, the last cross out there is, um, I would recommend that the city clerk actually is approving the petition as to form. That is not a content-based decision, but that the, it is in a standard form that's under state law. That's what I talked about last slide. Um, I just think that helps with consistency of what needs to be on the petition for the people signing it so that they understand. And so that's an important step in the process for, um, recall petitions. Any discussion or questions? No? Okay.
Actually, Ms. Sellers, we do have one question. Mayor Potem.
Uh, in regards to the charter amendments that are, uh, proposed, uh, I agree with the change on form, uh, striking form from the petition format. The other changes strike me as changes that we could address on a statutory basis as opposed to embedding them in our charter. Um, so, uh, I, I would propose that method, um, as opposed to making charter amendments to prescribe a specific process for recall. And lastly, I'll note that, uh, recall is one of the areas where I support the requirement to be an elector in the district. Uh, Inglewood is separated in four council districts with very differing opinions on politics and it would be difficult for me to process a, an elector from District One, for instance, initiating a recall against me as the District Four Council representative. Uh, so I, I support the requirement to be a registered elector in the district where you would be entitled to vote for a successor.
And I have a feeling that was very intentional, um, because the recall statute's been around for a long time. So it's a very intentional, um, that it can't even be, it can't even get rolling unless you're an elected or register for, that could vote for the person who you're trying to recall. So not if, obviously, council at large is one thing, but like, um, council, or Mayor Potem Ward mentioned, you'd have to be in the district if you were, um, trying to recall that, that council member, so. Um, yeah, so statutorily, these deadlines are not in here because the, the statute doesn't have this process. So, but you could do it by ordinance if you so chose. So you could just clarify it by ordinance.
Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to make sure I understand what you're saying, when you, your last recommendation to have the clerk, uh, make a uniform kind of petition or to approve the forms that it's consistent, is that not currently a requirement that it needs, the petition has to have a certain form?
Um, you don't have that requirement in your charter right now. You don't reference any state law, um, regarding the form of the petition or create the form of the petition in the charter. And because of that exclusion, the way it's written now, it indicates that there is no standard form in Inglewood for a petition for recall.
But it does say that the petition should include the statement of defense, correct?
Yeah.
That's kind of the only requirement we have.
Right, but the clerk's not even required to check that under your current charter language.
Great.
So if it wasn't in there, the clerk couldn't say, you can't, you can't circulate that, basically.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess, what I put was, um, it's not really broken, so why fix it? Um, the, I'm wondering if some of these things were understood. I really wish that Stephanie would have been here tonight. Because it seems like the, when a council member is recalled, they did have a timeframe on how long they had to respond to that. Um, do you know, Jim, how long it is?
No, I don't know, but I think, yeah.
Member Woodward, can you hit the mic?
I don't know, but I believe the clerk's office has forms that probably go back many, many years.
And it may have been a policy that the clerk just adopted to deal with that issue. I, I don't know, so.
Right, um, okay. I, I guess the one thing that I'm a little bit concerned about, I have gotten, uh, quite a bit of feedback about the number of charter changes on this ballot. Um, and I, I think some of the public is really questioning why we're doing all of it. If we come up with a whole bunch of charter changes for the next, uh, election also, um. So anyway, I, we have had a recall and, and I think that system has been working, so. Thank you.
Sure. And, and, you know, I think part of this process for you is to see all of the stuff and, and narrow it down as to what you want to do. Maybe you want to do some earlier than others and maybe you don't want to make any. So, I mean, that's certainly up to council, so. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I think we're good, then.
All right, so this next section, um, is about the number of signatures needed. Um, in, uh, Inglewood, it is twenty-five percent of the registered electors voting for all candidates for the elected officers, respected offices in the last preceding general election. Um, that is pretty close to state law. Um, state law actually has a very odd formula. You'll see it there in the third box down. Um, state law refers to the twenty-five percent of the votes cast as opposed to the registered electors. However, I actually think Inglewood's language is simpler and easier. So if you have several people running for a position, in, under state law, there's a mathematical formula. So it's twenty-five percent of the entire vote cast in the last election for all the candidates of that office divided by how many, um, officers were elected to that office. But in Inglewood, it's just done by electors and not vote cast. So if you, um, you know, let's say there were two vacancies and four candidates. So you voted for two people. You only get counted once because it's just per the registered electors. So I actually think that provision's simpler than state law. Um, and also, uh, the petition in, in Inglewood has to be circulated by registered electors, but under state law, it can be re- uh, circulated by any individual over the age of eighteen. And then finally, state law does provide detailed restrictions regarding the handling of the petition and how the affidavit of the circulator is supposed to look like. But again, I think those are things you can rely upon, um, even with this charter provision because your charter is silent as to that. So you, you can't break the petition apart. It's stapled, that kind of stuff. And so we're actually not suggesting any revisions to this section because of that.
Mayor Potem.
I think I'd be okay seeing this section stay as is. I do have a couple of com- comments I'd like to consider relative to this particular charter provision. Um, the first is in regards to the percentage requirement. Um, in the past, I think there's been some question over the clarity of the registered electors voting language. And I know how I interpret that, um, but I think that there is potential room for a different interpretation. So if I had one suggestion, I would like to clarify that. That is, you know, ballots marked in the, uh, election, for instance. And that means, you know, one elector may vote more than once based on the fact that it could be a pick-two election. But we're counting the number of electors that actually cast a, about, the number of ballots we received as the standard. So one person, one vote as the standard. Um, I don't know if there's a way to clarify that any better than it is now, but, um, having that as solid as possible would be one of my goals with any change made in, in this section. The other is in regards to the circulator requirements. Um, it's my understanding that some recent, fairly recent federal law has struck down, uh, residency requirements for petition circulators. So I think there's a risk there, um, contrary to the requirement to be an elector in order to initiate a recall, which I strongly support. Uh, I do not support restrictions on who can circulate the petition once it is, um, in, in place. I, obviously, it would be my preference that people who had an interest in the process were the ones circulating, but I don't think we have the authority to mandate that. Um, so I would like to see that changed.
Okay, I'm, I'm not aware of that case law, but I'm happy to look at it.
It was on a state, state level as opposed to a municipal level. Um, it dealt with a statewide position, uh, probably six or seven years ago. I think Gessler was the secretary when the state was sued in federal court.
Colorado was sued.
Anyone else with questions? Member Russell.
Um, and this question, I think, kind of deals with, uh, email that council got, um, a few weeks ago about, um, and I'm kind of trying to remember. It was about voting, um, for candidates. And I may have totally misunderstood that, but, um, a- and I guess what I was thinking also, because I run an election where there are two candidates and, um, is it perhaps possible to change, change the rules so that each at-large position in the year that, that I'm running, instead of picking two, that there would be two separate races like we did, um, the, the last election? When we're, we, we were replacing one of the candidates, um, for a two-year relec- uh, election and then, um, but we didn't run them together like the one that got the most votes. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Um, not entirely. I, because, so you have two at-large positions, is that my understanding?
Yes, and, and every four years, there's two at-large positions that always run together instead of being elected separately on their own ballot. So you might have four candidates running for two positions. Um, you probably could have more than four candidates running for two positions.
I, I think the short answer is no unless you stagger terms differently. I mean, if it's, if it, if the seat is open, the two seats are open at the same time, it's going to be one election, um, and you're going to have maybe multiple candidates for two seats.
Then why did that happen like last time where there were two at-large positions? One of them was filling, uh, uh.
A vacancy?
A vacancy and the other one was filling the at-large position for that election. Is that why they?
I don't know. I wasn't involved in your last election, but I'm assuming, I, I think I'd need more information probably on what happened.
I'm trying to think back.
I might be able to answer.
Yeah, Member Woodward, do you mind chiming in since you were on the ballot?
That was replacing an actual seat that was in place. And that's why there were the two, two different ones.
Okay.
So.
So they actually chose to run for a four-year or a two-year, the candidates? Is that what happened or did you just take the highest vote went to the?
The two-year position that was available was for a replacement council member that had left.
I understand.
And so if somebody wanted to run for the four-year position, they could have run on the other one.
Mm-huh.
So they could have picked either a two-year or a four-year. But then that next cycle around that came two years later, there would be two again, two people running, uh, or two seats available of which the t- two-year one would have been one of them.
So I guess what, to make this question more simple, is it required by charter that two of the positions will be open every four years? And therefore, in the charter, it says that, um, and I don't remember this, that those two positions, the highest votes will get one seat and the second highest votes. Is that prescribed in the charter?
I don't know if the highest vote is, but I suspect the staggered terms are. I just can't remember off the top of my head. Um, the highest votes may be there or they may be in your code. Um, but if it's two four-year terms, the two highest votes, I mean, that's just kind of the way elections work. I don't know that, it doesn't necessarily have to be in there like that.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm answering your question about how you can do it differently.
Well, I don't really know what my question totally is either, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Woodward, do you have a question? Mayor Potem.
This was an issue for me fairly recently. Excuse me. Um, and I, I think there is room, maybe not in this section, but, uh, for, for a charter improvement on how we're electing those at-large and what happens when one of those seats goes vacant. Uh, because I did have concerns about the process that was prescribed originally for the election. When we, uh, have a vacancy in an at-large, typically, we elect two at-large members every four years and one on the off, on the off-year, so. Um, but in the case of a vacancy midterm, what we're doing is we're altering the cycle. So we have two elections or three in a row where we're electing two council members. Uh, because whoever fills the vacancy has to sit for reelection at the next municipal election. And what's important to me is to ensure that the, that cycle remains consistent. So the two-year seat stays separate from the four-year seat. Um, and that also clarifies the standard again for recall. The standard to recall that two-year member might be different than the standard to recall that four-year member. Whereas if we elect them together, the one thing that's guaranteed is that they're going to have the same signature burden because it's one i- item on the ballot instead of two. Uh, so I think that's the, the process that Member Russell is, is referring to, is the lack of clarity in the charter for what happens exactly if the person who holds that one of those four-year terms vacates mid-cycle.
I see, okay. So looking at your charter, so just so I understand, your at-large, your at-large council members should be staggered. So unless there's a vacancy, there should never be an election for two at-larges?
Actually, that's not true. We do have three at-larges, two do run in one cycle.
Hmm.
So every four years, we ha- we elect two.
Okay, and then you do one.
Two years later, we do one.
Okay, I got it now, okay. So y- you're concerned that once there's a vacancy, then that person needs to, there needs to be kind of, um, a line for people who want the two-year term and a line for people who want the four-year term? Or do you, is that what you're concerned about?
Well, n- no, I'm not really concerned about that. I guess what I'm concerned about is who, well, maybe. So, I mean, every, every two years, um, well, every four years, two at-large members are elected. Two years later, there's one at-large that is elected, but then the four-year terms, so, you know, they're staggered.
Mm-huh.
Um, and if, if you split those up, um.
Like all three of them? Split them up, all three, so there's?
Well, the one of them that's running by themselves, that doesn't create a problem. But when there's two, t- two running at-large and, uh, part of the votes, a- and I guess I didn't even think what, uh, uh, Member Ward was saying. So if, let's say, an at-large council member that were two have won the seat and there's twice as many people voting for that, um, would take really twice as many signatures, perhaps even for the second person that didn't get nearly that many votes.
Mm-huh.
So, I, I don't know.
If they're recalled.
If they're recalled, but more so, I was, it would just, it seems to me like when I first ran and there were two people, the two highest people, um, I don't know, I guess. I really haven't thought a whole lot about it, but.
And that, the highest part is in your charter. Who gets the highest votes, um, and the next highest goes into those two positions? But it would be impossible to, there's always going to be two at-large, no matter, you, because you're only having municipal elections every two years.
Mm-huh.
You'd have to have municipal elections.
Well, no, what I'm saying is just put two, two ballot positions instead of just one ballot position.
Council member at-large one, council member at-large two position. Uh, uh, I suppose you could do that.
If they're, so is it just for ease, really? Is that why they put it? And they put it in the charter that way, correct?
Yeah, it's also extremely standard. I believe it mirrors kind of state, what state law would, would say about, um, because like statutory towns have no districts, um, so they're all at-large. And so it's just the common way that it's done.
Right, and I know Littleton, when they do it, they have one at, four-year at-large seat and one two-year at-large seat. So the person with the most votes gets the four-year seat and the person with the fewer votes gets the s- the two-year seat.
And, and you could do that in that, in that, the two that go together, you could change their, their terms, but then you're always going to have two at-large every election because the person who got the two-year term's going to, that's, so that's going to be open again when that other one that's sitting on a four-year term comes up, so. But you could do it like that and then on the ballot, it would, it would say council member at-large, four-year term, council member at-large, two-year term. And then they would be two different offices.
Okay, all right, well, so the, the short answer is we're not going to change that right now. It's probably.
But you could always refer it to the voters if you want, but yeah.
All right, thank you.
Member Woodward?
Yeah, I would be in favor of not changing it because it has worked, I mean, for years.
Okay.
Would be my opinion.
Anything else? Uh, Mayor Potem.
I've kind of taken us off on this bunny trail, but now seems like a good time.
Okay.
My suggestion would be that when the term length differs, we put a requirement in our charter that those are separate lines on the ballot. So if the term length is four years and we're electing more than one, that would be a single line on the ballot. But if there's a four-year term and a two-year term, then we're going to split those up on the ballot and we're going to say council member four years, council member two years, and elect those separately. Because the only condition under which we would have an election for a two-year at-large seat would be if there was a vacancy.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I'm trying to think, didn't, is it that what we did though?
That, that's what we have.
That was not the original plan. Someone complained.
Ah, okay.
And it got done.
So that's where the clarity.
Someone's always going to complain.
Thank you for that, Mayor Potem. Uh, Member Noonan Camp, did you have anything to add? I cut you off, I'll cap you.
And, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I mean, I think you can do that by ordinance rather than messing with the charter because I don't think it would conflict with what's in that charter necessarily right now. So if you had candidates, it's just talking about candidates of the same term, so four years. So you could say, you know, if there's a vacancy, that, that office shall be designated on the ballot separately. Or if there's a, if there's a, a term of shorter period other than four years, it should be designated on the ballot.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Um, so this is, uh, the process for when the, uh, recall petition has to be, uh, filed with the clerk. It's sixty days after, uh, the clerk authorizes it or approves it as to form under state law. Um, uh, if it doesn't get filed within that sixty days, basically, you have to start over, uh, if you want to keep going. And then this, uh, the date for the recall election is no less than sixty and no more than a hundred and twenty days. And then what's extremely common language is if there's a municipal election being held during that time or a state general election, it would be combined with that election. So you wouldn't be running your own election on that issue. Um, so, uh, so the sixty days is the same under state law. Um, there is a process under state law for protest related to the signatures on the petition. It doesn't exist under the charter. Um, typically, when your charter is silent, um, you can look to state law. This is a very specific process and I think it could kind of muddy the waters a little bit. I'm not actually suggesting that you incorporate it into your charter, but I think you could incorporate it into your code if you so choose to allow that pro- protest, um, process if you want to. Um, but I think not having something could, could lead to a lot of uncertainty. Um, the timing of the election is a little bit different under state law. State law is thirty to ninety days, but if there's a regular election to be held within a hundred and eighty, um, then the recall is to be held as part of that regular election. Uh, one thing, let's see. So the changes that we are recommending is that, um, some language, just to kind of clarify that the petition is filed in the time and meets all the applicable requirements of the charter and, and to the extent not addressed by this charter state law. So that kind of goes back to the form of the petition and things like that. Just kind of closes up, um, that in, is proper in all respects language, which is a little vague, so. Not the most important of changes by far, um, what we're going to talk about tonight. So next is the form of the ballot. Um, this is the state form, uh, so we don't have any suggested changes. It's almost verbatim from the state. And so just, just for your reference, this is what the ballot information looks like. The only difference for the ballot information under state law, um, is that the justification for the recall and the defense statement is actually on the ballot. In your case, it's on the petition, um, for recall. So I think it's a matter of philosophy as to whether or not people need the whole perspective when they're actually signing this petition to be circulated or to give them that whole perspective when they're voting. So under state law, they only see one side when they're signing that petition, um, that recall petition, and they don't get maybe a fuller picture until they go into the ballot box. So it's kind of a philosophical question as to what is best for the voters. All right, so in your charter, if, um, an officer is recalled, then the, the office is deemed vacant and then you get to have another election. So you actually have two when you have a recall, but it sounds like you guys may have done a recall. Maybe it didn't go all the way through recently. Um, and so this is probably the biggest change, uh, we're recommending tonight is that, so under state law, there's only one. is that, so under state law, there's only one election. So the people who could replace the, um, potentially recalled, um, incumbent are also on the ballot. It's just kind of easier, um, I think, I, I would argue easier for everybody involved, um, including staff and, uh, electors, they don't have to come to the ballot box twice. So, that whole provision, those two paragraphs would be struck. Um, and so this is kind of a little bit copied out of state law, kind of in general, um, talking about the names of the persons and when those nomination petitions would be due, to the clerk to get on the ballot. Any questions on this one?
Member Noonan Camp?
I have a question about the, the double election. Do any municipalities have it where there's one election for the recall, and then the council fills the vacancy like they would any other vacancy? Or are these the only kind of two options?
I'm not, I, I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not aware of any community that doesn't have one election to both recall and put someone in the office by the registered voters. I'm not aware of any, um, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying there aren't any, but I'm sure that, um, there might be some home rules that split it. But I think philosophically, um, the registered electors have said, we don't want this person in office, and to take that then away from them, when they have recalled somebody, and take that right to put someone in that position from them, I think philosophically, um, people might have, struggle with that a little bit, that they didn't want that person, they also get to choose the next one.
Thank you.
Member Woodward?
Yeah, I think on that, it, it depends, for, for us, the way it's been is, depending on how much time is left on the term. So, and when the next election is. So that's why council tries to appoint, or, or appoint somebody to fill out that shorter air time period up until the next general election, or municipal election. And then, that's where the two-year would come in.
And I think that's probably fine if the vacancy is occurred, it happens by any other means than recall, but I think this charter provision says it shall be filled at an election called by council. So it doesn't give you the opportunity to appoint if someone's been recalled. Now, if they die, or they resign, or they move away, I think appointment's absolutely fine.
Anything else, Member Woodward, go ahead.
This is the proposed change, correct?
The proposed change is in, um, the underlined section. The two paragraphs above are where, in your charter now. So in that first line, it says the office shall be deemed vacant and shall be filled at an election called by council, no less than sixty days and no more a hundred and twenty days.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm going back to two thousand seven. We had a member, at-large member, who passed away in September. We had to select, or the way that we have it now, we had to select somebody to fill that position till the Nov- November election. And, uh, I believe, if I recall right, at the same time, they got that on the ballot. Somebody to replace them effective in November after the election.
Right, and I think that makes sense because the individual passed away. Um, but here, the, the registered electors have taken action to remove somebody from office, and I think it's just seen as fundamentally different.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you. Member Russell?
Thank you. So, I guess my question is, um, if the, just because the registered electors file a petition to recall, doesn't mean that the council member will be recalled. So, how does that work out in this scenario? Um, I mean, it seems like this scenario assumes that the person is gonna be recalled just because they decide they're gonna recall them.
No, so what happens is, is if the vote for recall is no, then the votes cast for the person to replace are just null and void. They don't, they don't mean anything, cause the person wasn't recalled. So they are, those people only get put in the position if the recall is successful.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Ms. Sellers, go ahead.
Okay. So that's all for recall, I believe. Um, so this is just, and this is in your ordinance section, so now in the article five of the charter, that was article four, the recall took up that whole article. Um, this is in article five, this is your ordinance section. Uh, this is voting, this is a very minor change, just some update in language. It could say into the council minutes, into the meeting minutes, it could say all sorts of stuff, but, um, you probably don't keep it, maybe you do keep a technical journal of council proceedings anymore. Um, again.
Ms. Sellers, one second. Member Woodward has a question.
Yeah, I have a. Okay, our, we were on thirty, thirty-nine, right?
Uh, thirty-seven, voting. I hadn't gotten to thirty-nine yet.
Okay, every ordinance shall require the affirmam- affirmative vote of the majority of the membership of the entire council for final passage. Is, is the entire council, if, if there's a council member absent, one council member, that would not be the entire council, and with the qu- quorum, then, do we need to say entire, or should we be saying the quorum?
So, it could, this is a very specific provision. So typically, it would not be the majority membership of the entire council. Typically, it's the, it's the, uh, majority of those present at the meeting. Um, so yes, you can propose a change to this, um, but whoever drafted this definitely wanted the entire membership of the council to be counted towards what is a majority for ordinances. But if you were, had, you had several council members absent for some reason, um, you may have difficulty getting ordinances passed.
Yeah, I, I personally would think it makes sense of the members present.
Anything else, Member Woodward? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Sellers, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so again, this is a very minor change, um, just a cross-out of the, or printed for, the printed part, and just written form. Just modernization and updating.
Ms. Sellers, Member Woodward has a question.
Sure.
Going back to thirty-nine there.
Yep.
That last, uh, last s- sentence where it says, "All ordinances shall take effect thirty days after publication." Do we need the disclaimer, "All ordinances excepting emergency ordinances"?
Um, n- no, because I think, um, it is in the next section, or it's in your emergency ordinance section, um, which probably take effect on, which you may not have in front of you. So, in section forty-one, um, "Emergency ordinance shall take effect immediately upon final passage and shall be published within seven days thereof." So.
Okay, if that works.
So thirty-nine and, and forty are related. Um, so you have a thirty-day, uh, limitation on the passage of your ordinances. Um, that is the time in which a referendum can be filed. And, uh, one thing we always talk about with home rule communities is do you wanna shorten that time? Um, you have it thirty days, that is the standard under state law, but a lot of home rules go shorter. Um, not necessarily to cut off referendum, just to get their ordinance effective in a more timely fashion, thirty days is quite some time. And I'm sure you've run into the issue where you might want it to be effective sooner, but it's not an emergency, so, just something to think about.
Any questions from council? Don't see any further questions, Ms. Sellers.
That's it.
Any open questions from council? Mayor Potem, go ahead.
I don't think we really gave a lot of instruction on, in regards to the section thirty-four procedures. Uh, so, I'll just go on record, uh, stating one election, in my opinion, is sufficient and better than the current system that we have. Uh, that's the way it's done on a state level, and, uh, I think that system works.
Mayor Potem, were there any other changes that you wanted us to consider? I know the electoral reference, the percent- percentage requirement, sec- uh, circulator requirements.
Uh, no, not, well, the circulator requirement, I would like to see changed. Uh, I think I gave clear instruction on that, but, um, the other thing I did wanna weigh in on is relative to Member Woodward's comments on the requirement to have an ordinance passed by a majority of the entire body. And I do not support a change to that requirement. Uh, I think exercise of our legislative responsibilities is a task for the entirety of the body, and four votes is an adequate standard, and should remain so.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Anyone else? Member Noonan Camp?
I saw, I also support, uh, moving to one combined election for recalls, and would like to see some of the other cleanup measures taken care of by ordinance, some of the questions around timeline. I think those are common sense measures that provide clarity for the public, but I think that we can do that in a separate conversation.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
One more thing, on, uh, Member Ward's petition gatherer question. I'm curious to see what the case law is. I'm not sure I su- I mean, if we need to do it because there's case law, then it's fine. But my preference would be to keep it the way it is now, that only registered electors could circulate petitions. Um, my concern is, if you're familiar with that world at all, it's, you know, burgeoning business to gather petitions in this state, and then, you know, operate like mercenaries, whoever will pay them the most to gather signatures. And I would hate to see that affect the civic life in Inglewood, which right now is relatively protected from that.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. I'll go to Member Woodward and then Mayor Potem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the mayor's, uh, Potem's comment on requiring four votes. You could still have, you could have a person or a couple people absent, and still have, you'd have a, could have a majority of three, and you're suggesting that you wanna see a ma- super, or a majority of four. Is that correct?
Correct. The status quo under our current charter provision is that a majority of the body that has been elected to execute legisla- the legislative function is required to pass an ordinance. So that's four votes, as I calculated, and, uh, frankly, you know, in the event that we have fewer than seven people on the dais, and we can't secure agreement over an ordinance, perhaps that's a sign that the ordinance is not healthy, or we need to make some changes. Uh, but, that standard of four, it's a, it's a check on the authority of, uh, you know, potential council minority or majority, for that matter. And I, I like it.
I, yeah, I guess I don't.
Do you have four votes? Member Woodward, I'm joking. Um, anything else on that?
Uh, no, that's all, that's just my co-
Thanks, Member Woodward. Mayor Potem?
Uh, one more thing, I'm sorry, we're kinda shotgunning these, or I'm kinda shotgunning him at you, but the recall timeline, can we go back to, to that? Uh, because right now, if I read correctly, the city is not in parity with what the state has prescribed for the timeline. We, we give ourselves longer to declare an election. Uh, I'm in support of parity with the state requirement, which is the shorter requirement. Anytime someone agitates the voters enough to initiate a recall, we need to heed, uh, the voter's word and let them have their say. Uh, so, a, a shorter timeline, in, in my opinion, is, uh, better and more representative of of, uh, protecting the rights of, of our electors.
So you like the thirty to ninety days part, but maybe not the hundred and eighty day part?
Uh, correct. Parity with state law would be, would be fine with, with me on that. I think we, we give ourselves a hundred and twenty to set an election, so somebody could sit there for theoretically four months, while under the cloud of recall. I don't think that makes for an effective leader, personally.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Anyone else? Um, actually, I'll, I'll just jump in. I, I don't have strong opinions either way on what's been proposed tonight. Um, I kinda fall in line with, uh, what Member Russell stated earlier, where, not sure exactly if we have anything, any, anything broken within the process, but obviously, if, if there are members of council that do wanna make some changes, I'm, I'm open for that as well, so, um. So just my two cents. Anyone else? Uh, Member Anderson, go ahead.
I, I guess, um, my question is, you, we've, we've thrown out a lot of ideas here, and we don't particularly have, you know, clear consensus on all of them. Were, are, when we come to the end of this process, are we gonna go through kind of each, you know, you're gonna work up a set of questions, I suppose, and we can just go through each of them? Like as, as, as Mayor Pro Tim Ward suggested, the thirty to ninety day thing, he's the only one that mentioned it. I'm in support of that too. Um, but do we need consensus right now, or, or do you have enough information that can come back to us with this list of ideas that we have kind of collaborated on?
I, well, I think that's the list that's in your packet, right? Um, and so, what I've just been doing is kind of just, you'll see there's like notes of general comments that are made, and whether consensus was reached. Sometimes you do, sometimes you're like, yep, we're all in agreement, we all want this. And sometimes, you need to think about it. I think recall's a pretty significant process, you probably need to think about it a little bit. Um, so the idea was, is that we go through this, and then you all could go through it again, um, maybe quicker, and prioritize what you wanna see before we start drafting questions.
So you will add these suggestions to this list at the end, along with kind of some of the notes you've taken, from what people have suggested, and we can work through this at the end of the process.
Yeah, and so there's a priority column, I think, on there to help you with, you know, what you want your priorities to be. And so, I, I'll also put in the notes, like, you know, suggestions for ordinances to fix some of the issues as well, that you can take up later.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sellers.
Actually, I got a question for members of council. Since I don't receive a printed packet, I don't have those, that chart at the end. Would members of council like these? In the future, a printed copy, so they can take notes, or at least prioritize any of these items? No?
Well, it looks like this is something we can print off after, the fact, cause these, this'll get added to, right? This is, this is everything we've covered so far.
You'll see a new version of it.
And so the next version will cover the stuff that we did tonight as well.
And I can also give you, like, the electronic Excel version, so you can just keep your note, whatever's easiest for you. So, I'm also trying to keep track of what you say.
Know that works, Ms. Sellers. Okay, thank you. Anything else for Ms. Sellers? Mayor Potem?
One final note, uh, residency, uh, I just found it, Goodall v Griswold. It was decided in the US District Court for Colorado, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
It was decided?
Yes, the, March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Okay. Alright, I will look at it, and I will bring that up the next time.
Ms. Sellers, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Have a good evening.
Alright, moving on to agenda item two, this is Dartmouth Avenue Traffic Calming Project. We have, uh, Deputy Director of Public Works, Tim Hosts, uh, Capital Projects Engineer, Sarah Sieg, and Ben Waldman of Apex Design, and Mark Lenters. Uh, Kim Lee Horn will be present to discuss this project. Good evening, Deputy Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for that introduction. So I'm gonna give you a brief, uh, kinda overview of this project, and where we've been, and where we're, uh, headed on this project. This, uh, this project was identified when we, uh, were looking at the crash data for different intersections in the city. In this corridor on Dartmouth between Broadway and University, the, uh, signalized intersections had a lot higher crash incidents than we normally would expect for those intersections. So we, uh, subsequently applied to CDOT for some highway safety improvement program funding, and we were. funding, and we were fortunate enough to be awarded, uh, just over a million dollars in funding to address the, uh, safety concerns and the crash, can, crash, uh, crashes we were seeing along the corridor. So, we, uh, subsequently then, uh, entered into the IGA with CDOT, and we hired Apex Design, who is, uh, they've actually now merged with Consoor Engineering. So, you'll see Consoor on the presentation here tonight. That's the same as Apex. That's, uh, one and the same firm. And we've also got, uh, Mark Lenters from, uh, Kim Lee Horn here tonight. He's also a subconsultant to Apex Design. He's, uh, been looking at the crash data and really digging into kind of the types of crashes and what we can do to, uh, try to prevent those, what kind of infrastructure changes we can make in the corridor to help out with those, so... So, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to, uh, Ben, and, uh, he's gonna give the presentation, and then at the end, we'll, uh, answer any questions. And what we'd like to get from council tonight is your, uh, kind of your feedback and any questions or concerns you have with the proposed course of action and the proposed improvements that, uh, Apex Design has, uh, concluded would be the best, uh, solution to the types of crashes and the safety concerns in the corridor. So, once we're done, we'd like to, uh, make sure we have all your comments and, uh, suggestions and concerns, so we can incorporate those into the final design and continue to move forward with the design and eventual construction of this project. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ben, and he'll, uh, go through the presentation for us.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, my name's Ben Waldman.
Mr. Waldman, we are having a slight delay on your presentation. I think they're working on it right now.
Okay.
If you want to make some introductory comments, that'd be great.
That's fine, thank you. Um, so, while they're pulling that up, I'll introduce myself. My name is Ben Waldman. I'm a Senior Transportation Engineer and Project Manager with Consoor. Um, have over twenty-seven years' experience in all areas of transportation, planning, engineering, and design. Um, and I have some experience in the public sector as well. In fact, I worked, um, a while back, um, in the City of Arvada as a city traffic engineer there. I have with me also, uh, Mark Lenters. Mark is with Kim Lee Horn. He is out of Atlanta, Georgia, so he could not be here in person, um, but Mark is on our team because he is a national expert, um, for roundabouts. He, um, used to have his own company, um, Orston Roundabouts, and he is, um, now part of Kim Lee Horn. Um, so, he brings, um, decades of experience focused on roundabout analysis and traffic engineering. So, the project that we're talking about today is East Dartmouth Safety Project and Traffic Calming Project, and the location you see up on the map here is on the, in the northeast part of Inglewood on Dartmouth Ave-, East Dartmouth Avenue between Broadway and University. And the purpose of the project is to improve safety. Um, we want to do this, um, we want to do this so we can reduce injury crashes and really reduce all crashes. Um, we want to accomplish this by reducing speeds on the corridor, and we want to improve safety, not just for vehicles, but for all modes of traffic, including bicycles and pedestrians. It is, um, through a residential neighborhood, um, and so, we want to, there's a lot of bikes on the road as well. We have a bike lane, on-street bike lanes, um, lots of pedestrians, so we want to make it safer for those most vulnerable users as well. This shows the project location and the intersections where we're considering improvements. And we have two different symbols here, uh, one for bulbouts or curb extensions, and one for, um, where the signalized intersections where we're evaluating a number of different options that we'll talk about here in a minute. A little bit more about the project, um, as you guys are probably aware, it's a long straight corridor through a residential neighborhood, and that long, straight, wide roadway encourages speeding. That, we do see higher-than-expected crash rates at two of the signalized intersections, Logan and Downing Street. And, um, as, as we heard earlier, um, the project is funded by a federal safety grant. There is some local match, but most of the funding comes from that federal grant. Um, we're analyzing the intersections and evaluating them for safety improvement, so we're looking at a number of different options for that, and, uh, bulbouts are proposed, as I said, at the other intersections. And in addition to concrete construction, we're also considering, uh, quicker and less expensive pavement markings with flexible delineators. So, a little bit about the safety of the signalized intersections, which was really what drove the funding for this project. In the past five years, there's been fifty crashes at the three signalized intersections, and as you can see on the chart to the left, twenty-eight percent of those resulted in injury. That is higher than you would expect at a typical intersection. Um, to the right, you see a breakdown of the injury types, and, um, the first bar shows the total crashes, and as you can see in this bar, um, I want you to focus on that red color, which is broadside crashes. Broadside crashes represent almost fifty percent of the crashes at these intersections, and that, again, is higher than you would expect. Broadside crashes are also, as you see on the chart to the right, um, what typically result in injury crashes. So, eighty percent of the injury crashes are as a result of those broadside crashes. So, if we can reduce those broadside crashes or even eliminate those broadside crashes at these intersections, uh, we'll go a long ways towards improving safety on the corridor. Now, Mark's gonna talk a little bit about the evaluation we've been doing for the, the signalized intersections.
Good evening. Uh, so, Colorado DOT provided, uh, safety funds for this project, and the roundabout solution for three of the intersections in the corridor was considered, um, highly favored, uh, but we can't assume that a roundabout is the preferred solution without conducting our due diligence. On, on that slide that you see, I'm not sure if it's still displaying, I don't see it on my, on my screen share. It, it demonstrates the process of transparency and traceability in the decision-making on intersection control selection. So, there are three alternatives listed, rebuilding the traffic signal, a mini roundabout with what's called paint and post, a very low-cost mini roundabout, and then a mini roundabout that's more conventional with curb and gutter. Ben's gonna go into each of them in a little more detail, but what I can say is that, you know, although the funding has been committed, our due diligence is to ensure that there's a sound investment of those funds. So, studies that we've undertaken in advance of developing concept designs have to examine essentially three or four measures. The, the cost of the project, the safety benefits of each alternative, uh, the mobility benefits of each alternative, and, and the intersection capacity benefits. So, ultimately, it's a well-rounded process of quantitative, quantifying intersection control selection, and, and we use it quite frequently on, uh, on projects at, at the state level and across the country. Federal highways has prescribed this process, so, uh, the documentation we're providing on the slides is backed up with reports and, uh, and gets the support of CDOT in the case of this project and many others where safety benefits can be demonstrated with the use of roundabouts. Back to you, Ben.
Okay, so, um, as you can see in the summary here, um, all three intersections operate well, all through, all three alternatives, um, the roundabouts operate a little bit better, but even the signals will still operate at a good level of service with little delay. Um, all, the, the signal doesn't do a lot to improve safety, um, and the roundabouts really reduce, improve safety quite a bit. The cheapest option, as Mark said, is alternative two with the roundabout with paint and post. So, now, I want to just talk a little bit about what these different treatments are, and I, I'm doing this to, um, you know, make sure you guys understand what the improvements are, but also to share some of the public outreach that we'll do to educate the public as well. Um, so, the first slide is about the bulbouts or the curb extensions, and as you can see between the top and the bottom, the curb extensions have be, have been added here with paint and post or pavement markings and flexible delineators on the bottom. And what that does is it shortens the crossing distance, um, by a third, from thirty-six feet to twenty-four feet, um, so reducing the exposure to the pedestrians and bicycles if they're crossing there as well. Um, it also reduces, um, it changes the radius around the corner, so that, again, slows down the vehicles as they take those right turns, and then it also narrows the road. And so, vehicles and, and drivers tend to drive based on the feedback they're getting from the roads and not just the speed limit sign, and so, when you narrow that road, um, it tends to slow the traffic some as well. The next slide is about the signal rebuild. Um, so, we looked at this alternative. We, we did not look at adding turn lanes because of the right-of-way constraints on the corridor. Um, adding turn lanes would require taking right-of-way from people's property and potentially even condemning some properties. Um, so, we didn't look any further than just a quick look at that, but we did look at rebuilding the signal, and you can see kind of what that looks like. The existing signals are span wire. The new signals would be modern equipment with mast arms. You'd get two signal indications over, overhead, um, for better visibility. Again, also, you'd get the back plates, um, with reflective tape on them, which is current standards. Um, so, just improving visibility some, but it really doesn't do anything to slow the traffic down and eliminate those right-angle crashes. The next alternative I want to talk about is the mini roundabout. I know you guys have at least one roundabout in your community, and you guys have probably seen roundabouts throughout Colorado and throughout the Denver area, but these are a little bit different. Um, they're mini roundabouts, they're more compact, um, they slow the traffic even more. Um, they're, um, the center island is fully transversible for large vehicles, um, but it is mounted up to where it's not easy to drive over as a passenger vehicle. Um, but what they do is they really improve safety. Um, as you can see, they do that in a number of ways. Number one, they reduce conflicts. Um, a traditional intersection has thirty-two conflict points, and a lot, you know, you can see those in the diagram. A roundabout has eight. Um, and then, on the bottom, you can see, um, the types of crashes you get, um, right angle, head-on, left-turn crashes. Those all happen at a traditional intersection, and those are all completely eliminated from roundabouts. Those are these right-angle crashes on the right. Again, I bring this up, that eighty percent of those injury crashes can be completely eliminated from these intersections. Um, you still may have the rear end and side swipe and, and small angle crashes, but there'll be a lot less of them than a typical, than a traditional signalized intersection, and that's been proven, um, through a lot of studies. Um, the benefit summaries on the right show those reductions, and this is not just from modeling, but this is from actual data in the field from roundabouts that have been implemented. And another thing they do is they really slow down the speeds. They do this by forcing vehicles to slow down because of the geometry of the intersection, and they reduce the speeds to about fifteen miles per hour for these mini roundabouts. And you can see the, the blue in the blue, what that does to potential fatal crashes for a pedestrian. Um, at forty miles per hour, you're very likely to die if you're hit by a car, forty-six percent. At twenty miles per hour, that reduces to eight percent, and at fifteen, it's even less. Another thing we want to explain, um, to, to council and, and to the public is how do bikes and pedestrians navigate roundabouts? The diagram, there's really two ways for cyclists. Um, the diagram on the left shows, um, a couple different ways. The blue arrows show that bicyclists can travel through, approach the roundabout, they can exit in the pedestrian ramp, and they can travel through like a pedestrian and basically cross where the pedestrians cross, which is the safest place for anyone to cross. Um, this is great for your inexperienced riders, the children, the parent, parents with small children, right? They just cross as pedestrians on the sidewalk system. And then, on the top in the purple, you see the more experienced riders, they'll just take a lane, so you slow the speeds down to fifteen miles per hour, and they feel comfortable just mixing with traffic and traveling through the roundabout as another vehicle. Um, and again, I want to point out that it, those conflict points are reduced not only for vehicles, but also for bicyclists, reducing from sixteen to twelve, which is significant. Now, I want to talk a little bit about pedestrians. Pedestri-, there are benefits for pedestrians as well. The single-lane, compact design slows speeds to fifteen miles per hour, and so, when a pedestrian is waiting there to cross, if they step out on a curve and someone doesn't see him, they're only going fifteen miles per hour, and they have time to react and slow down and not hit them. The pedestrians cross one direction at a time. There's room in the center, in the center between the crossing for them to have some refuge, so that if someone comes exiting real quick and they're not expecting it, they can stop in the middle of the road in that refuge area, and the crossing distances are shorter, reducing their exposure. There are some challenges, um, and particularly for visually impaired pedestrians. Um, the biggest challenge is that unlike a signal, they're not given a signalized, protected crossing, right? The, the walking man that you see there. Um, instead, they have to cross like all other pedestrians and wait for someone to stop, and this can be challenging because they're, they're using audio cues to listen for when vehicles are stopping. Now, on a, a multi-lane roundabout, this can pose some real hazards. You can just imagine someone stops, they hear them stop, they start crossing, and then another vehicle comes in the other lane, and you have that dual threat. The urban compact design does not have that issue. You can only enter one vehicle at a time, and so, they listen for them to stop, just like they would at a stop-controlled intersection. And I do also want to point out that, um, this has been brought up in the U.S. Access Board for Public Rights of Way guidelines. They do require pedestrian actuated crossings for multi-lane roundabouts. However, they do not require it for single-lane roundabouts or mini roundabouts, which are also single-lane. In fact, they state that mini lane, that single-lane roundabouts are considered accessible provided there are basic crossing treatments and no pedestrian actuated treatments are required. So, um, as Mark said, we, we have created a concept. We are presenting right now as our preferred concept, the mini roundabout, but we want to make sure we get some public input before we make a final decision on this, and so, our next step is to go out to the public. We've prepared a virtual, um, public meeting space where the public can come in and it feels like they're in a, in a public meeting or in a gymnasium in this case. They can click on these different screens and find out different information. A lot of the information I presented to you today will be presented to the public, and then even more is, in fact. And, um, in addition, we're gonna have our concept in a role plot like this with the ability for the public to zoom in on their particular intersection that's next to their home, let's say they live in one of these corridors, look closer, really see what's going on, and also provide feedback to us and ask questions if they'd like, so they can go right into this space, they can add a little sticky note, they can ask questions, they can ask general notes, and they can provide input to us. We're looking for their input to help inform our final decision. And so, with that, I want to close on the schedule. Um, we're right now getting through the analysis, and we'll be starting the public input, um, assuming that we have, um, buy-in from the council immediately following this, probably in about a week from now, and then we'll be working through our design between now and next October. Takes about a year to get through the design process. Um, it is a federally funded project, so we have to go through CDOT's, um, public, public, um, process, or design process. And then, finally, we're expected to be in construction, um, next fall through, um, about a six-to-nine-month construction schedule. And with that, I will open it up for questions for me or for Mark or for, or for-
Mr. Waldman and Mr. Lenters, thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, we'll start off with Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate getting an update on this really important project. I have several constituents who live right at that Downing-Dartmouth intersection who are really concerned about the safety, and I know they're looking forward to seeing this move forward. My question is about the bulbouts and cyclists. We've also heard some concerns from residents about, you know, how will that impede the bike lane, and will they be able to get over it? Can you speak a little bit about the accessibility for cyclists in bulbouts?
Yeah, um, great question. Um, we, if, as you can see from the design, it's kind of hard to see, but the design on the left, our concept, we're not proposing to block the bike lanes with the bulbouts, so we would leave the bike lane, um, the same width that it is, and in addition, they'll have a little bit of extra space because, um, those flexible delineators will be offset two feet from the stripe, and so, I think the bike lanes now are five feet, and they'll have that additional two feet, um, through the intersections.
That's helpful. I see that very faint line there. Thank you. Um, my other question is, on the intersection safety evaluation, the table that you laid out, which is quite helpful, the bulbouts actually aren't listed as a safety intervention. Is it that just to slow speed and it's not considered for safety, or can you help me understand why that's not included?
Yeah, the intersection evaluation is, is just for the signalized intersections. Um, the other intersections are just free-flowing, and, um, it seemed, um, pretty apparent that any improvements there, um, would help slow the traffic and help with some safety some, and, and we're really not considering between several alternatives there. Um, we are just considering the bulbouts at those intersections.
Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Uh, my question is on the-
My question is on the, the kind of, the, the layout of the mini roundabouts. You had the pedestrians slide, I have that pulled up on my computer, but could you go back to that one? On the, yeah, that one, on.
Oops, sorry, pedestrians, the bicycle.
Yeah, yeah, that one, either one, I guess. The, on the, the far right, the green, you know, the, the mini roundabout kind of diagram there. You're, you're talking about slowing traffic to fifteen miles per hour. But just looking at this, my intuition tells me that those right turns, where they're just turning directly from one street onto the one to the right, it looks like in this diagram that the radius is much bigger than the center radius and therefore the speed at which they would be able to take a right turn would be increased. Is that true? And the, and, and what would, what are those speeds going around at the right?
Yeah, so the, the diagram to the right is really just a diagrammatic diagram to show the conflict points. The concept really is to the left there. And we, what we do is we force the traffic to kind of turn to the left and then turn to the right. And so that bulbout, the area that you see in red, kind of pushes them to the left and then they turn right. And we do look at what's called a fastest path analysis. So we look at all of the radiuses, the, the right turn radius, the through radiuses and the circulating width and the entering radius and the exiting radius. And we make sure that all of those meet the guidelines, which is fifteen to twenty miles per hour for a, a single lane roundabout.
So on the, the left drawing, the red, is that delineated with, is that, is that new curb coming out there into the street? Or is that just marked with striping?
It'll either be curb or it'll be striping with flexible delineators. Just depending on the funding we have. If we have enough funding to do curb and gutter, we'll do the full thing. If we don't, we'll, we'll go with the flexible delineators.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem.
Thinking about these broadside or T-bone, as I call them, crashes, is light timing a factor in those or canopy a factor in those types of crashes?
Yes, signal timing can impact those crashes, especially what we call the clearance interval. So the yellow time. If you don't provide enough yellow time, then you can end up with a lot of crashes and, and a lot of right angle crashes. If you shorten the left turn phase too much, people get frustrated and they start running that. So you can end up with more crashes there as well.
Have we done any kind of examination on, on these signals to find out if we're, if our timing is a factor or can be altered in a, in a way to improve safety?
So the, these signals are pretty basic. There's two phases. There's the side street phase and the main street phase and there's not left turn indications. You, you could certainly improve that, but there's no turn lanes to provide for those left turn lanes. And so the most we could do is give some more time to the side street, which may help with that frustration that I mentioned. But there's not a lot we can do with the signal timing in this particular case.
Okay, that makes sense. You wouldn't, for instance, put a left turn arrow in a single lane?
No, yeah, because then when it's red, nobody can go, right? We would only, you only use those if you have a dedicated left turn lane.
Oh, the other thing I, I would be remiss if I didn't address and I, I do address this every time traffic circles or roundabouts come up in our, in our city is I, I have a friend, one of our residents, who happens to be blind. And she maintains religiously that roundabouts are not safe for blind people. So to, to the extent that we are considering or might install a roundabout, I would strongly advocate for having some sort of defined pedestrian signal at the roundabout regardless of whether it's required for safety. I'll, I'll be clear here that based on what she's told me about the safety factor, I, I don't feel comfortable solving a problem for some people and creating a larger problem for someone else. So I am very unlikely to support additional traffic circles in Inglewood for that reason. But in the event that I'm outvoted, I would like to see some pedestrian signaling for people who don't have the benefit of sight.
Okay, yeah, and, and we can definitely consider that. I do want to point out again that statistics show that they are safer for all pedestrians. And there's been a lot of studies that bear that out. And I'm specifically talking about single lane roundabouts. And I understand that you're going to have individuals that aren't comfortable with that, that don't agree with that. But the studies have shown that they are safer for, for all pedestrians. And again, I'm specifically speaking to the single lane roundabouts. I know that roundabouts have gotten a bad name with the visually impaired community. And my understanding and based on the many years I've worked in this field is that that is mostly focused on the multi-lane roundabouts. And I explain the reason why for that. Really crossing at, at a, at a round, at an intersection like this would be similar to crossing at a stop-controlled intersection. You just listen for when they stop. And there is mixed sides to that argument of whether or not it's better to have that protected signalized crossing. There's a large portion of the visually impaired community that doesn't want those. And they don't want that because when they're out training people how to cross intersections, they get used to and start depending on that pedestrian crossing, that audible pedestrian crossing. And most intersections don't have that. And so they really want the community to learn how to use the auditory signs so that they can cross safely when they don't have that protection.
That clarification is helpful, thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Have you ever physically been over to East Dartmouth between, let's say, Logan and University?
Yes, I have, yes. I, I travel, I've walked through the corridor a, a number of times. Well, first of all, when I was trying to win the job, I wanted to make sure I really understood the corridor and then I have since, as we've been working on this project.
Thank you, I appreciate that because then you know it is very narrow. Not nearly as narrow as it is west of Broadway. The one thing that is important to me, this road, Dartmouth goes, transverses the entire length of Israel, of Inglewood from east to west, from university to federal. And it is the main thoroughfare east and west on the north side of Inglewood. This is going to create a lot of other problems. So the one thing that I'm going to ask is about the broadside accidents. At, and most of them are at Downing and Logan, right? Or are there any accidents? When I was reading the packet, I didn't see any at Clarkson.
There aren't nearly as many at Clarkson, you're correct. And, and Downing and Logan were the two intersections that showed higher-than-expected crashes.
So the broadside accidents, are they because the Dartmouth people are hitting people on Downing and Logan? Or are the people on Downing and Logan hitting the people on Dartmouth?
I think that both are happening. I think that more of the first, more, there's more instances where people on Dartmouth are hitting people trying to turn out from the side streets. And that's because they're going faster on Dartmouth and have a harder time stopping in time when something surprising happens.
Okay, and, and some of the questions that I was going to ask have already been asked. The one question on this picture that is up here on the left hand, those gold pieces on each lane, are those concrete?
No, in, in this case, those will be just paint for the splitter islands. And they need, they need to be fully transversable to accommodate large trucks. You will occasionally have a large truck, particularly when, if someone's moving in to a new house. You know, so some, so we want to make sure we accommodate those larger vehicles. And we also want to make sure we accommodate the larger emergency vehicles that need to get to incidents. And the center island though, will be like a mounded asphalt or something physically, that is physically hard to drive over as a passenger vehicle.
Okay, the frustration, I, I will tell you the frustration of a lot of the drivers. I mean, I don't have this issue, but the street is so narrow. When somebody happens to be turning left on Dartmouth or on Logan and there is no room to go around them on the right-hand side. So if the front car, if you're there during rush hour, you may sit through a bunch of lights just to deal with that left turn vehicle there.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That's one of the real advantages of roundabouts is the left turn vehicle enters the roundabout the same as a right turn vehicle or a through vehicle. So they don't have to wait any more than any other vehicle. They're just yielding to the roundabouts that are already in the circle. And so the only vehicles they're going to be yielding to are the folks. For example, if there's someone trying to take an, in this case, I'll say north is up, a northbound left, then all they have to yield to is that southbound left, if they happen to be coming around the circle right when they're trying to enter, or the eastbound through, right? So they're, they're not yielding to all of the through vehicles, which is the majority of the traffic on the roadway. Does that make sense?
It, it makes sense. But logically, roundabouts, we have a roundabout down here at city center. That's probably coming out at some point in time. I am not in favor of roundabouts. I think it is going to create a bigger problem than we already have. Have there been any fatalities on any of these intersections?
Not that I'm aware of, not in the past five-year crash record that we looked at at least.
Okay, and, and just one other thing, because I don't know if you're taking this into effect. When you're coming east or west on Dartmouth, at Downing, in the wintertime, if the road is icy, even if you're going ten miles an hour, you can actually slide, slide through that intersection. So have we taken into account accidents that occur during winter driving conditions?
We, we didn't look at weather condition, conditions. We were just looking at the, the crash summary. And certainly weather can be a factor at any intersection. But what we saw at this, these particular, these two intersections is a higher-than-expected crash rate. And as compared to other intersections in Colorado that also have those same potential icy conditions. And we also saw a much higher-than-expected broadside crash rate as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Member Anderson.
I'm, my question is on the public outreach portion of this. And I'm wondering in light of Mayor Protem Ward's concerns about our visually impaired population, if it would be possible to create some kind of an outreach opportunity specifically for that population or an, an outreach effort to make sure that they're well-educated on this? Because I, I, I know there is some concern from that community about roundabouts. They maybe had bad experiences with the two-lane roundabouts. And just some education and explanation, a look at the statistics and an understanding of how this functions differently. I do see the potential of, you know, of actually increasing the level of safety here with the single lane roundabouts, but want to make sure that the community is well, you know, really well-informed, especially with that particular population on that.
Yeah, we, we don't have that plan, but I think we could work with Tim and Sarah and work something out for that. I think it would have to be an in-person thing for a very, a much smaller group, right?
Thank you.
Mr. Waldman, I, I do have a couple of questions and I'm not sure exactly who this would be for. But when we go into the cost aspect of it, I'm just kind of curious. Are, are these one-time costs? Are there any ongoing costs for any of these options that may not be? Obviously, we didn't go into detail about what the pricing could be for either of these options, but are there any, you know, ongoing costs for, for, for lighting or for the roundabouts?
So, you know, the, the signal has some maintenance costs associated with it and that's ongoing. The roadway, if, if we do the full reconstruction, the maintain cost, maintenance costs are the same as you would have with any roadway, right? You're not adding any, anything that is going to cost you more to maintain. The paint and post option, there will be some additional maintenance costs to replace some of those flexible delineators. They do get hit sometimes, especially if you have a big truck going through here, their, their tracking might run one over. But I can tell you that they're not very expensive and, you know, they, so that it's not a big cost, but there may be some additional costs to maintain those flexible delineators.
And I, I guess my next question is going to be for Mr. Lunters, just because I, it, it does sound like you have some expertise in this field. But do we know what the impacts are for roundabouts, for the streets overall? Does it slow down traffic on, we'll just use Dartmouth and Downing, like leading up to it? Or after they go through the roundabouts, like what do we see since this is a residential neighborhood? What type of impacts do we see from roundabouts in other cities?
That's a great question. So there was a study done NCHRP seven-seven-two roundabout corridors. So looking at, you know, obviously the spacing of intersections varies all over. But the study looked at what's called an influence area on either side of a roundabout where there's deceleration and acceleration, entering and leaving the roundabout respectively. The numbers are in the range of, you know, about thirty percent of the distance, twenty to thirty percent of the distance between the intersections. So two or three hundred feet of the approach on either side, upwards of five hundred feet on the approach. If the spacing of intersections is closer, then those influence areas actually overlap. I think in the case of these intersections, the influence areas that affect the driver performance and speed would not overlap. They, they would essentially be independent. So it's entirely conceivable that, that drivers would be able to reach, you know, the mid-block speeds of thirty, thirty-five again in anticipation of the next roundabout. Of course, they have to begin, begin to decelerate. The, the sense that we get from studies of corridors is that there isn't a hurry-up-and-stop atmosphere or, or expectation that develops on the part of drivers. As they approach signals, if they anticipate an amber, they're going to speed up. You know, if they're down the block and the next signal's ahead, they're going to do the same in expectation of the next signal. So there's a, a propensity for speed associated with signals and they're not always timed in coordination and, and progression so that you get a green band. And when they are, that just propagates speed further. So even though the spacing of roundabouts is fairly generous here, there's going to, an expectation's going to develop on the part of drivers that they can get, the throughput's going to be good. They're not going to be stopped at signals in the, you know, in between the intersections. Downey-Clarkson, they're, they're going to be able to get through. They just can't get through at the speeds they would if, if there was a green light there. And, and that's a very important consideration because it has an overall calming effect. And studies we've done on, on speeds, the, the travel time tends to be lower in corridors of roundabouts compared to corridors of signals, even when there's, there's ample green. You can't always get green. The opposite direction might not get green. But when you have reasonably spaced roundabouts in succession, three or more, you get, you generally get a, a calmer speed profile. And yet the travel times are lower. So an excellent example of this is in Golden. Golden was one of the first roundabout corridors in North America. Avon, Avon was actually the first, you know, in Colorado and five roundabouts there. But Golden did studies after and looked at travel time, looked at crash reductions, looked at development incentive. On all the measures that they studied, all the very important measures, including tax benefits, the roundabouts produced all the way through and, and created, you know, calmer traffic corridor and, and more amenable to development, more amenable to pedestrians. The expectation of pedestrians was they don't always get a gap, but, but traffic does slow. And even on icy conditions, drivers anticipate having to navigate a roundabout. So they're not going to approach it as they would a signal where it just might turn red. And now they're in, they're in jeopardy because they haven't anticipated that and they're on a downhill incline and they're going to skid through the intersection on wet or icy conditions. So we, it's really about developing a driver expectation that changes the quarter operation without reducing the throughput.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Lunters. I, you know, I, I guess in terms of moving forward, I would want to see us move forward with this evaluation. I share some of similar concerns that some members of council have stated about our visually impaired citizens and, and making sure that we happen to dialogue about what this potential, what the potential impacts may be. But obviously slowing down drivers along this corridor, we talked about getting them down to fifteen and possibly even lower, that that does improve. You know, if, you know, we want to. You know, if, you know, we wanna prevent fatalities overall in the city, and I'm glad that there's been zero, and we wanna keep it that way, so I do wanna see this moving forward. Even as a cyclist, I know that some of my fellow cyclists aren't big fans of many uh. Roundabouts, but I do see the benefit of it because you are reducing the speed, so. Um, is there anyone else that wanna, Member Anderson, I thought I saw your light?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on, on that corridor discussion. Do the bulbout have any effect on speed uh through the corridor?
Um, yes, they do. Um, it's not as noticeable clearly as, as the roundabouts where you're really forced to. Um, change your approach angle and, you know, drive through kind of an S curve. Um, but that, just the bringing the, the appearance of a narrower road um helps to slow the traffic some.
Thank you.
Member Woodward?
Yeah, I'm just wondering too on. The visually impaired or, or hearing. Specifically hearing with EV cars and stuff which are so much quieter. And they may be. Well, impossible to hear. I- is there some sort of? Light or whatever that somebody can push that? If provided that they're aware of it, that they can just push and there's a blinking light to yield or something like that to pedestrian?
Um, yes, there is. Um, there is what's called a R RFB, a Rapid. Arcular flashing beacon sign. Um, so that's a pedestrian actuated sign that you push and then it strobes. With around the, you know, with two strobes under the sign. Um, so that it, there, that is available if, if it's something that council and staff wants us to consider for this project. Um, it would of course add cost to the project, so that's something to consider as well, um, but certainly those are available.
But i- if there is an area, for example, that is. Numerous hearing impaired or visually impaired or, or people in wheelchairs. That could be put in place to. Slow traffic even more to, or at least be aware if somebody's standing there.
Yes, okay.
I like the idea. I really would like to see, I mean, I'm. I guess a believer in roundabouts and would like to see us moving on to the next steps. I, I Dartmouth bicycles, and it could be because I'm not a bicyclist anymore. But it seems awfully narrow there. It's scary to me the way it is, period. But that's a personal thing. Thank you.
Anyone else from council wanna weigh in? I think we do have a majority of the council that does wanna see us at least move forward with the evaluation, so. See some nodding heads, but without any further questions, Mr. Waldman, Mr. Lunters, thank you very much for the presentation tonight, as well as members of staff and. Look forward to continuing this conversation in the months ahead, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, everyone, I think we are ready for our break. About a ten-minute break, so if we wanna come back right around seven forty-five, we'll pick up the last agenda item for the night.
Yeah. I think it sounds bad, if it ever.
Six.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I saw it. It's pretty cool. You better little, little, little library.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm a big sports fan.
I know it's mostly at, at school life. Is it a little library? Thank you so much, yeah.
Alright, everyone, we are back. Last agenda item of the night, we're gonna be talking about pedestrian safety month. With Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd, Deputy Chief Vance Fender, and Executive Director Hillary Portell. Pass it to you, Assistant City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and tonight I'm kinda wearing the hat of interim Public Works Director in this presentation. And just wanted to thank Deputy Police Chief Vance Fender and Executive Director of the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, Hillary Portell, for joining me tonight. So tonight, we're gonna go over a few things. We're gonna talk a little bit about some national programs such as Vision Zero and a few others. We're gonna talk about work that we've done to date related to pedestrian safety, and a lot of what we're gonna cover tonight also just kinda transcends into the larger context of transportation safety. Executive Director Portell will go over pedestrian updates that have been done or planned by the DDA. Deputy Chief Vance Fender will be going over accident data, and then we'll also be talking at the end about some recommendations and next steps. So just to let council know, October is National Pedestrian Safety Month. It's recognized by the United States Department of Transportation and by cities, counties, and states all across the United States. It celebrates really the right of everyone to be able to walk or roll safely. I included a few statistics here, so in 2020, six thousand five hundred and sixteen pedestrians were killed in the United States, which averages out to about eighteen per day. In 2021, pedestrian fatalities were projected to be up about thirteen percent over 2020. Vision Zero is something that you may be aware of. It started in Sweden in nineteen nineties, but essentially it's a model that's proven successful in several other cities. The city where I worked previously is utilizing it, the city of Denver is utilizing it, many others have. And really what it is, it's a strategy. There are playbooks and there are documents, but it really is more of a theory or a vision or a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries. While also increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all, so it also focuses on increased use of different multimodal types of transportation. And so, this is a stat that shows kind of the importance of Vision Zero and a few other statistics to show that at least one driver was speeding in over one in four fatal crashes across the United States. That data's from 2017. Helmets were estimated to be thirty-seven percent effective in preventing fatal injuries to motorcycle riders and forty-one percent for motorcycle passengers. And more than half of teenagers and adults who died in car crashes in the United States were not wearing a seatbelt at the time of the crash. In our region, Dr. Cog in 2019, they started a very comprehensive regional Vision Zero strategy. They published a document that's about a hundred pages long that was actually in the, not the original, but the strategic plan that council adopted in 2020 actually included a project to utilize the Vision Zero documentation and materials that were developed by Dr. Cog, so it's something we've been working on. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But Dr. Cog developed a regional guide based on a planning process. They did interviews and talked to residents and others in the area about traffic-related issues. They created the toolkit that I mentioned. And the three principles they followed in creating it were complete streets, equity, and Director Portell will talk more about complete streets, equity, and then safe speeds. I just wanted to share an example that I found out about a few years ago from the state of Washington, and so in nineteen ninety-nine, Washington realized that they had six hundred and thirty-one people who died from traffic accidents, and so they decided to set something like Vision Zero called Target Zero by twenty thirty. So the idea was in thirty, about thirty years, thirty-one years, they would reach this goal, and the reality with setting a stretch goal or a stretch target like this is that you're probably never going to hit it, but the idea is that you're working together to create strategies to lower it, and often when you do set a stretch target, again, you don't achieve it per se, but you do if you, you know, use the right strategies and you're working towards it, you get significantly closer to the goal. So what they did is they basically, they used data to understand the why of why this was happening. So they looked at things like, you know, was the why related to road conditions? Was it related to signals and markings and signs? Was it related to users, distracted driving? Was it related to, you know, lack of use of safety equipments, just seat belts or helmets? And so they identified twelve different strategies and challenges to focus on, and they've significantly gotten closer to that target. There's also other national programs besides Vision Zero. Safe Routes to School is one we do wanna do more of. One of the projects that's currently in our strategic plan is to work with the Inglewood School District to map out three safe routes to school. There's actually a grant program. The deadline is looming on November fourth, but we hope to try to submit an application working with the Inglewood School District on this, but essentially it promotes safe walking, biking, scooting from kids to get to school. And then complete streets is something, again, Director Portell will talk more about, but it's an approach that focuses on basically everyone using our roads, scooters, pedestrians, cyclists, transit riders, and others, and making sure they have the same access to comfortable streets as motor vehicles. And it's a regionally overseen program by Dr. Cog. And Safe Routes to School, as I mentioned, is ran by CDOT, and they do provide grants for that. So just to give a quick update, right now, in the city's strategic plan, we do have a goal that's in our Infrastructure and Transportation section or Outcome section, and that goal is to ensure the safety of all while traveling in Inglewood. We have four projects that are currently in this goal. We're really starting to ramp up our work on these. One is to review dangerous intersections as part of E-TAC, the Inglewood Advisory, Transportation Advisory Committee. So two have been identified, and then we have the grant that we just talked about related to that. The Complete Walkability Maps for Three Schools is something we're a bit delayed on, but again, we wanna try to partner with the schools and so secure grant funding if possible for that to identify and implement quick strike initiatives to improve safety in sidewalks. One of the things we've done towards this is to re-stripe all crosswalks in the city last year, and then working towards the completion of Neighborhood Calming Program, and so we talked obviously about the project in Dartmouth, and then we'll also review and plan out other projects this year. We talked about, so we won't go over this in detail, but we talked about the Dartmouth Traffic Calming Project in the last study session you just had. Also, I believe this was at your last meeting on the consent calendar, you did approve this item, which are pedestrian improvements around the Malle area, and if there are any questions on this item, Deputy Director Hoas could address them. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to Director Portell to talk about the work the Inglewood Development, excuse me, Downtown Development Authority has been doing.
Alright, thanks and good evening. Pedestrian safety is one of my favorite topics, and it's a real guiding principle for our board as we consider our work in downtown Inglewood. It's great to be working in a community that is starting to lead on these issues. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Steering Committee for the Denver Streets Partnership, which is a coalition of organizations that advocates for people-friendly streets in Denver. So we're behind such efforts as the city's Vision Zero program, the Complete Streets Design Guidelines for Denver, and the Twenty is Plenty Campaign for Streets Beat in Residential Neighborhoods. A graphic that has always been the most impactful for me is one that shows visually if a pedestrian is hit by a car going fifteen miles per hour, or excuse me, twenty miles per hour, there's a fifteen percent chance of severe injury or fatality. If the pedestrian is hit by a car going thirty miles per hour, there's a forty percent chance of severe injury or fatality. And if the vehicle is going forty miles per hour, there's a seventy-three percent chance of severe injury or fatality. Streets can be designed to be safer for everyone, and I always keep that data in mind when I'm looking at a street situation. During the downtown planning process in 2020, fifty-one percent of community survey respondents ranked two things: make downtown more bike and pedestrian friendly and improve safety of downtown as very important. The resulting Inglewood Downtown Plan recommends safety, mobility, and accessibility improvements to corridors and high-crash intersections. We're especially focused on Old Hamden, South Broadway, Inglewood Parkway, and Highway 285, particularly the intersections that serve the downtown area. So the intersections at 285 and Inca, Galapago, Cherokee, Logan, and Clarkson. That's a CDOT project that Inglewood is leading, but we could use a lot of advocacy around that. We need those intersections to be safer and multimodal so that people on both sides of 285 can come to the downtown area and go back to their homes when they need to. In addition, we're working to strengthen the multimodal network throughout downtown, particularly east-west connections between Inglewood Station and the Medical District, as well as working with the city to strengthen the Inglewood Trolley Service. The idea is to give people a variety of ways to get to, from, and around downtown Inglewood safely. There are some really vulnerable communities living within one mile of the paseos on South Broadway. I did some research when I was applying for a grant to improve those paseos and the crosswalk there and found that within one mile, forty-nine percent of the households are low-income, fourteen point five percent of the population are seniors, sixteen point two percent of the population are children, and fourteen hundred residents within one mile of that location have no vehicle. In terms of our community members with disabilities, twelve point five percent of the city's population lives with a disability. Eleven hundred people within a half a mile of Old Hamden have disabilities, and two hundred to three hundred people per year are living in Inglewood while attending rehabilitation at Craig Hospital. All of these folks need to live, work, shop, and use area healthcare amenities and services. Street design is particularly important for these groups. So let's look at Old Hamden. This is a street that's perfectly designed to move vehicles quickly, okay? It has wide travel lanes of twelve to thirteen feet wide, virtually no streetscape elements on the side. It has some sidewalks, but they're not well-marked or the signal is not quite strong enough. There are, you know, few visual clues to slow down and watch for pedestrians. But, as we all know, the area is growing rapidly, and there are competing interests to serve, and this is where the complete street design philosophy comes into play, that we're not just designing the street for vehicles anymore, we're thinking about everybody who's using that public right-of-way. So we need to consider new residents, seniors, people with disabilities, customers of local businesses, people with chronic health conditions, hospital employees and patients who are coming to both hospitals. The employee base in that area works twenty-four seven, so we're thinking about safety, not just in the daytime, but in the nighttime as well. So the goal is to transform the Old Hamden corridor into a safer, multimodal, and accessible street for everyone who's using it. Had the opportunity to work closely with our Public Works Department on stakeholder engagement for the Hamden project, and we did a corridor walk with a number of folks several months ago. One of them is Gail Hamilton, who is a senior who lives along Old Hamden. There are five senior apartment communities on Old Hamden between Broadway and Lafayette. Anyway, Gail is always trying to get to the Malle Recreation Center, the Safeway on the corner, and to the downtown area or along, into shops and businesses along South Broadway. And she showed us how many ADA ramps are actually designed at an angle, and they send people into the intersection instead of into the crosswalk. It's not uncommon, it's not only found in Inglewood, but there are some of those along Old Hamden that are dangerous for her. Also, she pointed out storm grates at intersections that pose a real hazard for people using wheelchairs, walkers, or a white cane. Business owners and hospitals express concern about safety for customers and employees at night when there is very little lighting along that corridor. A young woman who lives in a new condominium and uses a wheelchair pointed out the lack of safe crosswalks and how she is barely visible to motorists when she's moving around in her chair. The photo on the far right shows the citizen in the wheelchair in the middle what it looks like when a vehicle comes upon him. You can barely see his head above that wheel. So when you're in a wheelchair, you're only this high. And, you know, motorists more than likely aren't looking for you or can't see you if they're going too fast. Between 2015 and 2019, there were one hundred and forty-four crashes on Old Hamden, including one fatality and twenty-one injuries, and that was before much of the current new development. So that's why this project is so very important and why I'm so glad we all got assertive about going out and getting a seven-point-three-million-dollar grant to get this work done in the next two years. This shows how the Project Advisory Committee comments really directly informed many of the elements in the conceptual plan for Old Hamden. You know, additional lighting has been added. There are, there's a crossing plan and suggestions for safer crosswalks and better signals. The designers have added green spaces wherever possible. Narrowing the streets a little bit helps with calming traffic and slowing speeds. And moving those storm grates onto the side street instead of in the intersection. This is one of the cross-sections of the Complete Streets project, really showing a wider multimodal sidewalk on the north side with a landscape buffer between it and travel lanes. The vehicle travel lanes get narrowed from twelve or thirteen feet wide to eleven. Still plenty wide enough for a vehicle, but that visual feeling that everything's a little tighter makes motorists slow down and look out for things. On the South Broadway Paseo project, we were able to secure a CDOT grant for almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to implement pedestrian safety, mobility, and accessibility improvements to both paseos. Again, the designs were informed by stakeholders who are using the area on a regular basis, and the improvements include enhanced lighting, particularly on the east side, overhead string lights on the west side, bicycle corrals on both sides, landscape improvements, and a wheelchair charging station on the west side. Installation could occur late this year with landscaping going in next spring. We worked closely with Public Works on a second project involving improving the crosswalk between the two paseos. This is a crosswalk that stakeholders in the area repeatedly pointed to as a place where vehicles were speeding, not watching. There were close calls and collisions happening. In fact, and, you know, those observations were supported by police data collected in 2021 that showed that up to fifty-two percent of vehicles were traveling over the speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour, up to forty-five miles per hour throughout the area, or through the area. And, you know, the evening we all sat down last summer and went over this set of improvements, we got up, left the meeting room. There was a collision right there on that crosswalk, and that's what the photo in the left shows. What happened here was there was a pedestrian walking in the crosswalk. The beacon was flashing. The white Jeep suddenly stopped, so he looked up and realized he had to stop. Car behind him ran into him. The pedestrian, fortunately by that point, was in the mid-block and did not get harmed. Federal Highway Administration has identified high-intensity activated crosswalk signals, like the one on the right, called HAWK signals, for improved safety on corridors like Old Broadway with more than, like Old Broadway, South Broadway, with more than ten thousand daily vehicles and conditions conducive to higher-speed travel. The HAWK light is better than the flashing beacon because it assigns the right-of-way and it provides positive stop control when pedestrians activate it. That's engineering speak for when a pedestrian pushes the button, a red light goes on and cars have to stop until the pedestrians get through the traffic. HAWK signals can result in a fifty-five percent reduction in pedestrian crashes and twenty-nine percent reduction in total crashes. Public Works Department expects to install this signal next year. Collectively, both sets of improvements will go a long way to making really the heart of our historic downtown much safer for people, regardless of what mode they're using. So, fourth quarter of this year and into 2023, we're gonna be focused on the city center corridor study, which will look at making Inglewood Parkway multimodal and safer for pedestrians using different modes. The Little Dry Creek Greenway feasibility study, looking at a multimodal path along the Little Dry Creek Stream Channel, and the Inglewood Trolley enhancements analysis. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm here tonight to present some accident data that we gathered as part of this project and as part of a, part of a strategic plan we're working on. So to recap a little bit on some of our overall findings, we did find in our top five accident locations, a majority of those accidents percentage-wise occurred between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. We talked a little bit about our traffic team of three officers and maybe adjusting some of their hours to overlap at this timeframe, and then we've looked into some signage and other enhancements at these locations. So our number one, and these numbers are from August of twenty twenty to August of 2022, so for two years. So the number one accident location in town is Santa Fe and Dartmouth. Majority, and you'll see that all of these have some things in common, the majority of all of these crashes were caused by rear-end collisions in all five top accident locations. So that's number one. Number two, the majority occurred between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. So Santa Fe and Dartmouth is number one. We talked about some of the pros and cons of the enforcement side of it, and one of the biggest cons that we saw was many, many years ago when CDOT changed the speed limit from forty-five to fifty-five down Santa Fe through Inglewood, Sheridan, and parts of Littleton. That makes routine traffic enforcement difficult based on the speed of the motorists, as well as there's a lot of, there's not many places to run traffic enforcement there either because of all the concrete barriers, the lack of the side of the road, things of that nature. So we looked at those two things on Santa Fe. Education you're gonna see is also the same. It's all talking about signage, PSAs, public safety announcements, and any public safety or traffic safety campaigns. So that's something that's also all the way through. So our second highest accident location in those two years was Santa Fe and Union. Also, again, same thing, majority crashes, rear-end collisions. Speed limit was raised to fifty-five many years ago, making that enforcement difficult. And then we just had some engineering suggestions, but this came from the police department, so take that with a grain of salt because we're not traffic engineers. So these are just some things that we came up with that we can work with Public Works on. The third highest accident location is at Broadway and Bellevue. Exact same crash data, education, enforcement, and then again, engineering. The biggest thing at Broadway and Bellevue that's different than our Santa Fe locations is we do have some pedestrian violations that we could look at there and some pedestrian education that we don't have really on Santa Fe that didn't really come into our play for that. Number four is Inca and Highway 285. Again, exact same issues. We did talk a little bit more about some increased lighting under Santa Fe near Highway 285, and then maybe even working with Sheridan and CDOT to lower that speed limit coming from River Point into Inglewood. Those are some of our engineering thoughts. And then number five was Galapago and 285, and again, all of the same traffic crash data there with rear-end collisions and the majority of these occurring between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM. Some of it we can control with the traffic engineers and some of the traffic lights because the city of Inglewood controls those. Some of those are controlled by CDOT, so there is that disconnect there as well. And I'll turn it back over to Assistant City Manager Dodd.
Thank you. Just wanna close out with a few recommendations and next steps, so the first one is, and this is just for council to consider whether you would like So um the first one is, and this is just for for Council to consider whether you would like to adopt a Vision Zero goal um and also related projects, and so this, I will be coming back to in November um for a uh update on the quarter three of the strategic plan. So it could potentially be added then if you'd like to, or um it could be a further topic for your discussion as part of your retreat um and goal-setting and envisioning for the next um next year and updates of the strategic plan. Uh we also um you know, wanna consider identifying the whys, which Deputy um Chief Vender just talked about of accidents, and working together to develop strategies to solve for those whys. Um if Council does decide to adopt Division Zero goal, then we would um leverage uh resources from Dr. Cog, which are pretty extensive. Um we also want to develop an internal framework. Uh this is something also that was actually in the strategic plan for about two and a half years ago um that I think was working for a little while, but kind of uh fell away from it about a year and a half ago. Um so basically bringing back an internal review panel that would involve uh traffic engineering, um someone from the Traffic Division in Public Works and someone from police um to review crash data um after accidents um as well as on a routine basis and make recommendations similar to what you saw on the last couple slides. Um also, you know, re- to review the recommendations made by the police department related to enhancements at the top five crash locations in the city. Um also to continue to seek out grants, this is again something that um the State of Colorado, um Dr. Cog, the county to an extent, the federal government, um they're all really interested in this, and so there are a fair amount of grants that are out there, and so we wanna be um as active as possible as we have been in securing that funding. We also wanna make sure that we're engaging the community in this work. Um that again, if Council does decide to move forward with with Vision Zero, um that we would um you know, work with our Communications Department on a campaign um to ensure the public's aware of what the city's doing, but also to provide tips on how individuals and groups can be safe and vigilant um about pedestrian safety. Um we also wanna improve information on the city's website, something that's um as you may know, I I would say in my time as interim director, I think I've gotten we've gotten four or five different requests from people, please put up a si- a sign here, please put signals here, please improve the markings here. And we do have a process, and and Deputy Director Hoes can talk more about the details, where we we review um that data and we sometimes often do traffic studies with our contracted traffic engineers. But what I've realized is we're not um, we don't have on our website kind of a rubric, you know, not to say we would give everything unless it was requested, but at least explaining, you know, when we make a decision about signs, you know, we look at these ten or fifteen factors. We look at, you know, the average speed through a speed study, you know, we look at visibility, we look at these factors, and so if you do apply to us, you know, to have a sign installed, here are the things that we look at. So being more transparent about that, um continuing to work with E-Tech on transportation, safety goals and projects. Um also de- developing uh more of a routine, I guess I would say, relationship with the s- the school district on safety in school zones and also safe routes to school. And then I'm continuing to partner with the EDDA, as Director Portell mentioned, on downtown pedestrian enhancements. So um just questions for for you to consider this evening are, um you know, would you like to see a Vision Zero goal? And again, it would be something we would have to figure out what the timeframe would be, um and it would be really more something we would strive towards as a stretch, and it would help us kind of strategize um with more things that we wanna do in this area. And then if if so, if you would like to do that, are there existing pro- additional projects um you'd like to see added to the strategic plan? Um and I included the four um projects that we currently have. So that's it.
Thank you very much, everyone, for the presentation tonight. We'll open it up for questions for Council. Anyone who wanna start us off, Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, all three of you. Um the question I have is on the traffic, um the or the uh the accidents. Were there, or were were those numbers specifically pedestrian-involved accidents? Or do we have, do we have that data, or is that just general car collisions? You have to turn it on.
Oh, my bad. Um these would be both, uh, cause a a traffic accident is defined by the state as uh a person or a vehicle that is damaged or injured by a vehicle in motion. So it's a combination of both.
Okay, is there a way using the data that we have to pull, you know, pull a list of just pedestrian-specific accidents to identify which intersections or which types of intersections maybe ca- are causing pedestrian, you know, where pedestrians are getting hit or killed?
My short answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would be really interested in in that because as I've heard about, you know, um different pedestrian fatalities and pedestrian accidents, um I'm hearing about them on small, you know, residential streets and then a number of them along Broadway. I'm not hearing about them so much along Santa Fe, maybe they're happening there, but that's a very low pedestrian traffic area. I mean, nobody wants to cross Santa Fe anyway, so they're just, they're not there if they can avoid crossing it on foot. Um so it would be really interesting to to me to know where those accidents are happening so we could maybe more specifically target the pedestrian, you know, zone. And I I think Broadway is a big one, obviously, because it's a fa- a bit, a wide, fast-moving street with lots of people, you know, lots of foot traffic and lots of car traffic at the same time, so. Um and I know we have a Complete Streets project kind of in the, potentially in the works there as well, so. That's that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward?
Thank you. A question on the safe routes to schools. Didn't, didn't we do that a few, five, six years ago with the school district? Didn't we have some? And then the other uh question I have is you say three schools. Would these be elementary schools or what schools are we talking about there?
It's okay, I'll answer the second question first and then let Deputy Director Hoes answer your first question. Um so the the plan just specifies three schools. Um so my plan is to reach out to the Deputy Superintendent and start a discussion, or interim superintendent, and start a discussion with her on it, and then um to an extent, let the schools kind of influence what that looks like. But I think they're often done for elementary schools.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the uh, uh five, six years ago, I wasn't here, but I do know there was one Safe Route to School Grant project completed, uh Broadway and Mansfield, that signal there on those boulevards, that was Safe Route to School funding. So I know there was some, obviously some coordination with the high school for that, I think. So that's, there has been coordination, it just hasn't been anything recent that we need to kind of freshen that up and get the priorities back in order so we know what we need to go after.
You know, Tufts might, right at Tufts and Broadway, I don't think that light certainly isn't the same kind of light as Mansfield and Broadway. And since our biggest elementary school is there, or, you know, Clayton on one side and then Cherry Lynn on the other side, that would be a, in my opinion, a pretty good street or a pretty good intersection to be looking at to do some uh work on the lights. Um another just comment I heard this morning on the news regarding Denver Vision Zero, and they had counts on how they've lowered death rates in the City of Denver, and City of Denver's pretty large. I assume they include D I A. and stuff, but they were saying twenty-six deaths for this year, which was lower than other years. So over the last, I think they've been doing this for two or three years, it's it's coming down. And I I would agree that really thinking you could get to zero would be pretty difficult, real difficult. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, everyone. This is one of, I think, the things that I hear the most from residents is they're concerned about speed, right? Is, as uh was mentioned in the presentation. And I think it's important when we have conversations, which we're having right now around density, around walkability, around, you know, an economic downtown district, that we're also keeping other things in balance, like our infrastructure and our safety. All of those things kind of have to be at equal levels to ensure that the community feels like they can live here and thrive here, and I think this is part of what we need to consider when we're having those other conversations concurrently. So I support moving forward with something around this, and I think this is a helpful way also for both the city and the residents to house this conversation, that it lives under kind of one place. Now, whether we call it Target Zero, the goal looks like a Vision Zero, I'm flexible there. I think if there is um a regional benefit, working with our regional partners and Dr. Cog, and if it makes sense to kind of adopt that moniker, I'm I'm open to that. But I think that investing time here, I mean, I think of a couple months ago, Member Anderson, was, we had some public comment and you were so compelling to say, people are dying in our community. We had these deaths on South Broadway, what are we doing? And I think a coordinated effort that has tactics and strategy together is gonna be really helpful and something that has stuck with me and, you know, the question of what do we do with that conversation? So I'm excited to see this come together. Briefly on um the Safe Routes to School, I believe that our resident who asked for the youth commission specifically called out that program or that project um for something that that commission could look at, and so I think maybe that'd be another uh key stakeholder in this moving forward.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Um actually, I got a couple of questions, and I'd guess Deputy Chief, um this one may be for you, or actually, City Manager, you may wanna take this one. But um we have a couple of projects with the state right now with or with uh Dr. Cog or with C dot. One is Santa Fe, one is Hampton. Do your recommendations tie in? Well, I guess your recommendations right now are just from a city level, but are we expecting to get recommendations from Dr. Cog, C dot, whoever happens to be about what we need to do on S- Santa Fe and what we're planning on doing with Hampton? And I know that this is a multi-city project for both, but I'm just kinda curious.
Yes, sir. So that is one of the challenges of this is because some of these streets are controlled by the City of Inglewood, and we can make those decisions on our own. And then we've got Santa Fe and two eighty-five, both of those corridors that are not just our our responsibility, that we would have to work directly with C dot to try to uh work with their traffic engineers, with our traffic engineers, to do some of those changes. Now, the enforcement's ours on on both, so. But in for, you can't arrest your way out of a, out of a traffic accident or problem. I mean, really, it's it's all about education and engineering.
And I guess Deputy Chief, I think some of the recommendations you have are for Santa Fe, so we would have to consult with C dot or at least wait for their recommendations.
Absolutely, on both Santa Fe and two eighty-five, sir.
Okay, perfect. Uh I'll pass it over to Mayor Portell.
Yeah, I was gonna bring up the topic of enforcement and some of the enforcement challenges that you've identified. I I find myself, as I'm traveling around town in my car, sometimes uh with a slightly flexible approach to various traffic laws. Uh I I'm much more cautious when I see a police cruiser. And I, when I see it, I don't know if there's anybody in it or not. Um so I'm wondering if we might consider, even for those areas where we aren't able to pull somebody over, just parking a cruiser, like at the gas station or something. And, you know, here we are, like, you know, watch out. Um or, you know, taking some more clever approaches towards uh, you know, drawing the attention of drivers to to what they're doing on a regular basis.
Yeah, and and some of those have been tried, and I mean, I remember starting here. We did that at several intersections with an empty police car and did some of those types of things. And um I I think what ended up happening is is uh, I I think our our residents and our visitors got wise to to a lot of those places. Some of some of the mountain towns you drive through and you see the same police car in the same place all the time, um that kind of deal. I think that's what happened there. But yeah, we have, we have done things of that nature, and if we move forward with this type of stuff, and even if we don't, those are t- some of the conversations that we're gonna have in terms of uh uh how do we do this most efficiently? And and obviously, I feel the same way as you do. I know if I see somebody pulled over at a, at a stop sign more than two or three times, I know that that police department's watching that stop sign, and so I automatically come to a complete stop, make my, you know, one hundred, two hundred, three hundred count, and then I move on. But so I do the same exact thing, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Uh the other issue is the, that location, Dartmouth and and Santa Fe is on the, sort of the far northern edge of our city, pretty close to the Denver border. So we're feeding a lot of traffic from Denver, and I wonder if there's an opportunity there to to partner in some way with Denver on on enforcement action and say, hey, can we work together on this? Because this is a problem for uh for both of us.
Yeah, absolutely, and 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 I think a little bit during my presentation, I talked about especially as we're coming towards Santa Fe and Union, that's even more uh uh of a of a closer city limits between Littleton, us, and Sheridan within less than a quarter of a mile. Um we just happen to have the intersection.
Right.
Um and but everything else on either side of it is City of Littleton, City of Sheridan, pretty much. So yeah, and that, a- anything that we do enforcement-wise would be partnered with with our other agencies on Santa Fe.
And this number, a hundred and thirty-three, is is pretty shocking, particularly in comparison to the rest of the crash data. And I know that we've had some pretty ugly fatalities in that area in the last ten years or so. What, if anything, has C dot s- uh discussed doing, or what what is their approach?
I can't speak to that. I really don't know what their approach is. I, you know, the the major improvements that you and I have both seen or or the major changes, I would say that you and I have both seen are the things that I know that C dot's done. The biggest one being raising the speed limit from forty-five to fifty-five many years ago.
Okay, and then the the last question is in regards to the engineering solution. Um I'm not clear on how metering the traffic onto two eighty-five would actually help.
Nor am I.
Okay.
Nor am I. These are just some things that we uh that we came up with. This was kind of like uh uh, you know, thrown out on a whiteboard to see if something, something stuck.
Sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Member Woodward, back to you.
Yes, uh Deputy Chief, I have a couple of questions for you on, let's see, first on the Santa Fe and forty-seven-hundred block, is the parking actually on Santa Fe? I I've never noticed that. I
Where at again? I'm sorry.
Well, it says uh post no parking signs in forty-seven-hundred block of Santa Fe and in front of the Seven-Eleven.
Oh, yeah, so um we do have many, many uh uh trucks and moving vans and garbage trucks, et cetera, parking on Santa Fe in an actual, they're not obstructing a right-of-way, uh especially in the mornings. That's a, that's a big deal in the mornings for all the businesses that are around there. They uh park there because they can't park their large trucks in the parking lot at the Seven-Eleven there on the corner.
Okay, yeah, I just, driving Santa Fe, I'd never remember seeing any have noted it in my mind. Well, I don't drive there way in the morning. Also, I I'm just curious to on have, has our traffic enforcement, have we put less focus on that in recent years? And and I'm saying that because I've noticed Broadway, I'm not seeing like the less, I'm seeing less police cars and I'm noticing people passing me in that two-to-six or two-to-eight o'clock window. Um at forty-five, fifty-five miles an hour going up Broadway, it's like racing to the next red light, which is, seems awfully odd, but I I'm not seeing any enforcement going on there.
So I can't tell you that there's less enforcement. What I can tell you is that, number one, we've had staffing challenges, as you know.
Yep.
And uh our traffic unit is down to one motor officer right now. Um so that is a, our whole traffic unit right now as of today. Um normally, it's staffed with three, and uh right now, we've got one of the uh officers that's a stand-in supervisor for another sergeant that's out on uh baby leave, and uh the other traffic officer's been out on uh long-term medical. And so we've had that. Um we also had COVID, which stopped much of our proactive traffic enforcement or proactive enforcement at all, uh because we just stopped doing that for the lesser egregious offenses. And then uh it it just goes back to what's our our risk versus reward, as we've talked about many times, on uh stopping vehicles for minor traffic violations.
Yeah, and I'm just curious, is there much in the way of uh accidents south of Hampton or two eighty-five on Clarkson?
I don't have any of that accident data, so I really couldn't speak to it.
Yeah, there was, at the high school, Mansfield and Clarkson, there used to be an officer there almost every morning, and he was making a living.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we have done, especially with our traffic team, is we focus their efforts more on school zones, high-traffic locations, and then citizen complaints. And frankly, I, we don't get many citizen complaints from a stop sign at Mansfield and Clarkson, so it's really not high-profile.
Yeah, it's
But I do remember doing that when I was on patrol as well.
Yeah, it's just a rolling stop is what's happening on Clarkson. Yeah, that's, okay, that's, that's all I have there. Thank you.
Member Anderson and then Mayor Portell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just want to speak to some of the general ideas and suggestions. And thank you, staff, for bringing this, because I did mention this a couple of months ago when, um when that gentleman came forward and talked about about some of the pedestrian deaths we've had along Broadway. And I do think um if there's some way we could elevate this uh pedestrian safety um as a priority in the city. I, I, I think it's probably one of, one of, one of the highest, you know, areas of public safety concern in the city altogether. I think there are more people that die from, um from our, you know, in terms of what the city has responsibility over. Um die, pedestrians dying on the streets, it is happening every year multiple times. Um and uh it's something, something we need to address. I, I, I see some real challenges with how to go about addressing it though. And I love, like, let's go for the Vision Zero, you know, some kind of a, yeah, a camp, campaign that puts this at, at the front of our minds. But, you know, I think about, you know, we're investing, you know, thirty million in our stormwater because of, of a, you know, a lot of that was prompted by a flood and a death that went along, along with that. But with our stormwater, we can increase fees and borrow against the enterprise fund. I don't know how we go about funding this because a, you know, bull, uh bull bouts on one intersection are gonna cost Tim could probably answer this, ten or twenty or thirty thousand dollars, depending on the size of the, you know, size of the street and that kind of thing. And we need them everywhere. Like, we need to slow down traffic everywhere. It doesn't, I, I do think when you start looking at this, you see pedestrian uh traffic, pedestrian accidents are happening all over the place. And everybody complains about how fast people are going down their streets. And so I don't know, I don't know what we do to get at that. I know if we, we can prioritize things, we can do a complete street somewhere. But again, complete streets is incredibly cost prohibitive. We can do it in a few areas, and we should, where it's possible and where we have the grant funding to do it. Um but we gotta, like, like, think creative. And when we go about this, look at what other cities have done. What are some low-cost alternatives? I mean, can you take um these flex posts and, and put them up and install, you know, install bike lanes for cheaper? Not just for the sake of, of bike traffic, but to, to narrow the streets and, you know. I, I don't know what the solution is, but think really creatively about what are the low-cost possible things that we can do on a much broader basis, even if they're not as effective, you know? Uh um as the, the expensive things, but doing something is better than doing nothing. Um or doing, you know, just a, a very small percentage of our streets finding these improvements, so. Um or think about what is a dedicated funding source to where we can, we can push forward with a much broader array of traffic calming measures throughout the city. But um again, thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm totally supportive of whatever elevates this in terms of our priority in the city.
Uh Mayor Protem, actually, go ahead, Mayor Protem, and then we got City Manager after you.
I also wanted, before we conclude, to take a moment to compliment one particular uh line on citizen engagement. And that is the public information piece. Um I think since I have come onto council, one of the requests that has sort of frustrated or perplexed me the most because I really don't understand how it works, is when a resident approaches me and says, why don't we have a four-way stop here? Or why isn't there a speed limit sign here? Or why is this road one-way? Uh so that public information on, on the website and a, you know, even a portal to request a review of something I think is a, a huge step in the right direction for sharing what our policies are, why we hold them. And I, I think it, it will provide a great service to our residents. So I, I really appreciate that, and I wanted to compliment you for adding that as part of the package.
Thank you. And it, it really, Mayor Protem came from the fact that um I, I asked one of the deputy directors um because I've gotten about five of these requests since I've been the interim director, and I said, how did Director DeAndre handle this? And he said, well, to be honest, we haven't gotten a lot of these in, in a while, and they've all kind of came flooding in. And so being, being really big on data, um I want to make sure that we're not making decisions by our gut, you know? And that we're making decisions based on data, which we are, you know, through our traffic studies, but that we're also showing with a rubric, with an FAQ, with information, with a conversation, how we're coming to these discussions and these decisions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Assistant City Manager. And to that, um I know I've been copying on some of those responses. I know that Eastman and Cherokee, I believe was one of them, that was requested and was denied. Providing that information on why it was denied and, and projects that have been looked at, I think would be beneficial, so. Um I think I have a couple more questions. I'll keep them brief, but just, um I guess in terms of the Vision Zero, I would be in favor of this. And part of the reason why is because it would prioritize it as uh for us as council. And I know we've been talking about just prioritizing, how do we prioritize things for the capital projects? I think this is one way that we say that we are gonna be looking at ways to minimize pedestrian deaths or provide multi-mob- uh mobility options for the city. So I think that that's one way for us to do it. Um and just keep it top of mind. So I know it's gonna be hard just based off of what Member Anderson stated in terms of just funding sources. Uh but we're doing complete streets on um on Hampton, and a lot of that is through a Dr. Cog grant. So there are funding mechanisms that we can be using from Dr. uh Dr. Cog or C dot or, or for the federal government in order to get these done. But I guess my question to that was, i- is when we talk about Vision Zero, are we talking about it in terms of prioritizing it as part of capital projects? Or what does staff see as the importance of labeling something as Vision Zero or, or prioritizing multi-mobility?
Yeah, so what I was really looking for tonight is if it is a direction you want to go, we would need time to then come back to you either as part of the strategic plan update in November or as part of your retreat to basically provide, um you know, as strategies and tactics that would become part of the plan or become part of it. Um we, you do um every year prioritize goals that are in the strategic plan. So certainly, if this is a goal that you add to the mix, some it would be up to you to decide where that priority falls in the plan. And certainly, um you know, we're, we're, we've continuously worked on trying to, you know, integrate those priorities more into how we make decisions. Um and so certainly, if that was a priority set by council that wasn't your strategic plan, we would come back to you with recommendations on how to prioritize funding for that. You know, as you mentioned, of course, there are a lot of grant opportunities. We've gone after some, we continue to go after others. That's one source. It's a great source in a lot of ways. And there, again, there is a lot of money out there for this, but of course, it's not always reliable. And it's not um kind of a dedicated revenue stream, but it is, it is definitely, it has made a difference in the city and it definitely could in the future as well.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Thought I had one other question, but I can't think of what it is off the top of my head. But is there anything else from council on this? Or I, I guess if we could just get members of councils to weigh in on whether there's a Vision Zero goal or anything else. I guess the one thing I did want to say is that I have heard from citizens that they do want to see west of Dartmouth. I know we were talking about Dartmouth earlier, east of Broadway, tonight in terms of what we're doing there in terms of uh uh safety. But liking to see something on west Dartmouth as well, I'm sure that we're probably just on the beginning stages of that, but that would be a concern. Obviously, Broadway, we've touched on that quite a bit, and then just where there is additional density occurring within the city, whether it's up at Windermere. Um um and that type of thing. So it's, is it, it's Windermere down south, but I'm trying to think what it is alongside. Navajo, there it is. Um I always want to call it Revere, but um yeah, so those areas I think I would prioritize. But obviously, based off the data that we happen to have from the city, in terms of pedestrian accidents or deaths, that, that should be driving our conversation. But anyone else want to weigh in? Mayor Protem?
Something about the Vision Zero comp, concept rubs me the wrong way. And I don't know if it's bec- because Denver has it or if it's because it's shooting for a goal that we all can agree is very likely not possible for us to achieve. Um but, you know, I s- I saw portions of Denver's Vision Zero plan implemented when I was still commuting downtown, and then I stopped commuting downtown for a couple of years. And as I drive downtown on occasion now, I find it vastly more difficult to move about in my car. And I have to attribute that to Vision Zero's plan. So in my opinion, it would be better to work towards something that, that is a compromise or a, you know, that serves the needs of both people who choose or must drive in their car and people who, and that, that might also be as impossible as zero traffic deaths. Um but I, I do need to go on record and say that the, the Vision Zero concept, or maybe even just the name is, is not something that, that really resonates with me personally.
Mayor Protem, do you mind if I ask you why it's more difficult to drive in downtown Denver for you?
Yeah, they've removed lanes, they've restricted lane travel, they've reduced speed limits, and traffic volume hasn't changed. So it takes much longer and is much more difficult even just to make a lane change than it used to be by virtue of the fact that, that they've, they've altered the traffic flow so drastically. Just drive Lincoln and you'll see.
So the, the reason why I mentioned that is that I'm just kind of curious. I, I don't agree with all the changes that they made downtown, but it has slowed down traffic. And it does allow for cyclists to feel a little bit more comfortable. My office is downtown and I do get a ride on. It's not Arapaho, but one of those streets that I am a little bit more comfortable, but I understand your frustration with some of the changes. But I think some of those actually have added to being able to walk a little bit easier or being able to ride downtown a little bit easier. So I think that is some of the, I, I think that is a success in a sense, but um but yeah, I, I think that that was part of the goal, I guess, in a sense, but uh, Member Anderson.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's part, that's the point of, I mean, I think, I don't think that's an option. If we want to, if we want to save pedestrian lives, we have to slow the cars down. And, and that doesn't mean on every street. I mean, I don't think Santa Fe we need to, I'm, you know, that's, that's a, a road that's designed to, to transport cars at a high rate of speed. But any city street, I think, is, needs to, like, I would like to see them all slow down in Inglewood. Um the, but Hampton and Santa Fe, where these are big connectors for, for multiple communities. Um I don't think quite the same road rules apply there, but I do think that that's one of the, one of the things we have to make our peace with in moving, you know, if we move forward is that there is going to be a slowing of traffic for pedestrian safety. Because that's the only thing that, that helps. Um but I wanted to, like, on the, in, in terms of people who are requesting a stop sign or, or something like that, I totally agree that we need to have, like, guidelines there. Um the one exception I would say to that is if, if there's been a fatality or a pedestrian accident at an intersection, to me, that's data enough to say that something needs to be done at that intersection. And um I know we had one at uh, you know, Bannock, uh Bannock a, a few blocks south of Oxford, I don't remember what the intersection was there. And they, they never, you know, they never really got, the neighbors really wanted something there, stop sign or speed bump, they never really got anything. But it would be nice to have, you know, a set of options that we could say, if, if a, if an, if an accident happened that causes a fatality or pedestrian accident happens, we will do, you know, do something, even if it's a low-cost, more simple kind of measure. It'd be nice to have something like that in the works available for that.
There's somebody, a deputy director, who was up to talk a little bit about kind of the national standards that we use and what a fatality would, would mean for that.
Yeah, definitely a fatality is certainly uh something that stands out, you know, studied a little closer. And a lot of times, the way some of those turn out, it's kind of the, depends on the cause of the accident and what was going on. Sometimes it's operator error, some, somebody's just being reckless and just uh, you know, not even obeying the laws or anything. It's difficult to, to do any kind of uh infrastructure that's gonna prevent that. If somebody chooses to disobey the law and then be reckless, then that bad things sometimes happen that way. But we certainly, we do look at the uh, a, a little heavier study on a, on a death like that. We're gonna look at the type of crash and do we need to do so. We certainly wouldn't say no to any improvements that would, that we felt would be something that would prevent that in the future. But uh we, it's just kind of a case by case, and a lot of those that are a fatality do turn out to be sometimes some type of operator error or just carelessness on the part of a driver or something, you know, that's uh something that's difficult to prevent with any kind of traffic control measures. So that, that's kind of how those are looked at in those situations. But they definitely are looked at closer to verify, is there something that can be done to prevent this in the future?
I, I think my, you know, my follow-up on that is, since I, I think we need traffic calming on every you know, on every residential street, um then that's, you know, to me, that's reason. And even if, even if you, you study it this way and that way, and you say, you know, this was not, this was just a, you know, caused by an operator error or something like that, I don't, that doesn't, that's not, that's not too compelling to me. I, I feel, you know, this, I'm just one council member, but I feel like if there's been a fatality, we don't even need to research the cause. We need traffic calming everywhere, and that's a great place to put it because um it's a place that needs it. And it, they've already experienced the downsides of it. So anyway, that, those are just, that's my personal opinions for what it's worth.
Thank you, Member Anderson. I actually agree with you as well. So uh, Member Woodward, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to give my opinion.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
I um, I am supportive of moving forward with this. And to address, I think, some of Mayor Protem's uh objections or whatever. I, I think this is enough of a toolbox that we can pick and choose and pick and choose within our means, so to speak. I mean, it's, it's better than doing nothing is the way I'm looking at it. And I, and you know, I don't care if, if it came from Sweden and Denver does it. I mean, okay, call it Inglewood's vision or whatever. But it, I think it's moving in the right direction, and so I'm in support of doing something within our means.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Member Russell, I skipped you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um I would just like to weigh in on a few things. One of them is I, I do agree with Mayor Protem. I believe, a- and I believe that's what's gonna happen on Dartmouth as well. I believe that there is a rush hour. We moved into that home twenty-seven years ago. There was no rush hour on Dartmouth. There are now two rush hours, one in the evening and um one in the morning. And it is going to slow down um traffic and, and really create a traffic jam. And I believe there are other tools in our toolbox. When we have a fatality, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, there have been two fatalities on Broadway um in a very sh- close area of time. Um I, I believe the one thing that we are missing, and this council is doing nothing about it, is enforcement. And if you want people to slow down, you have got to give enough tickets to cause people to slow down. We cannot make the, the infrastructure so narrow all over this city to stop traffic totally. And, and I believe there's one huge mistake that we make, made, and I brought it up in January. S- uh C dot was doing a study along the Santa Day, Santa Fe corridor for um six or seven years. It just came to a conclusion, we missed our opportunity to be involved in that. And now we're addressing those problems when we could have addressed them as a whole. And it, I, it incredibly disappointed me at the time it happened. But we have got to deal with the enforcement um piece of this. Um it, it is not just the infrastructure. It is also um, and the truth is, I don't agree with not figuring out what the problem is if there's a fatality. If there's a fatality, we need to figure out what the problem is, because if we don't, we can't fix the problem. And um i- if it is an enforcement problem, slowing uh you know, changing the infrastructure will just maybe create more. So anyway, um I'm just weighing in on that. I uh, I think we need to identify where the areas are. That's one of the things that occurred to me. Even on the Dartmouth corridor, I, there have been accidents there. I understand that. I, I think there are other solutions to that problem. But I think that we have other areas like the Broadway issue that is more important even than Dartmouth. So anyway, that's what I think.
Thank you, Member Russell. Member Anderson?
I just, I wanted to just push back on, on that a little bit, because I, I don't think the idea of controlling traffic speeds with enforcement is, is realistic. You can, you can do a little bit here and there and ho- hopefully have some impact. But there's so many competing priorities within our police department and public safety there. And the reality is people are gonna go as fast as the road tells them to go. If they, if they feel comfortable going fast, they're gonna go fast, and there's not enough, they're not, we don't have enough cops on the streets to um to slow down traffic on all of the streets that we have. And I don't think the data bears out that that actually makes a big difference in terms of um pedestrian fatalities and that, and the research that I've done. Um so I w- I wish it was that easy that we could just invest a little bit in enforcement or change some signs. Um but I don't think that's the way it works in, in the real world, and I do think it's gonna be an investment, so that's my two cents.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Anyone else want to weigh in? Actually, just uh Deputy Chief, um you, when you talked about the traffic, you said that there was only one currently in place today, but you have three open. You, when you talked about the traffic, you said that there was only one currently in place today, but you have three open positions. Can you just talk about? How the numbers have changed? I know that Chief Watson has come in front of us in terms of. You know, how many sworn you have and how many open positions you have, but have those numbers changed over the past couple of months?
No, the Traffic Enforcement Bureau, uh, or our unit has always been three officers.
Okay.
Uh, in recent memory, uh, two on motors, one on a car. It's just so happens right now with the staffing that we've got going on. Uh, with the the different leaves and the medical issues, we're just down to one.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm I'm sympathetic to Councilmember Russell's comments on enforcement, um, but I also understand the position that we've placed our police department in. And, you know, given the choice between an officer on the side of Broadway issuing a traffic ticket for speeding or running a red light. And that same officer responding to an armed robbery or backing up the Denver Fire Department at a major medical incident or wreck or a fire even. Or responding to a domestic violence call, I'll pick the latter over the former every time. So uh, I I trust the way the police department is prioritizing those calls. Um, and I know that you guys are are stretched and that you're doing the best work you can. Um, to the extent that we can. Do more traffic enforcement, um, I also have to go on record saying. As someone who lives across the street from Clayton Elementary School, I appreciate seeing traffic enforcement in the school zone. During the time when the children are arriving and leaving. Uh, that's very important to me. Um, and I would rather see that than a cop with a radar detector, radar gun on on Broadway. Uh, any day I'll take the four-way stop enforcement or the speed enforcement near the elementary school to protect the children over on Broadway.
Hopefully you are seeing that cuz we are emphasizing that at our school zones every morning and every afternoon with not only the traffic officer we have right now, but. All the patrol officers, you should see cars there.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from council or Assistant City Manager? Do you have what you need tonight or? Did you hear consensus?
I think so. Um, and so I just, I guess, wanted to make sure that confirm with you, Mayor, that there is consensus um, for. Having staff come back, I guess, in November when we come back for our strategic plan update for quarter three. Um, with a draft for you to look at and consider that would include um, Vision Zero, but we could call it. Whatever you'd like us to call it. Um, we're happy to come back with a few recommendations if that's what you'd like from us. Um, I was, I'm in my mind, I was thinking something like Vision Safe or something, but whatever, whatever you decide, we're happy to come with recommendations if you'd like us to. And then recommendations from strategies that would kind of help um, help us get there in November if if you're amenable to that.
I think so. Uh, Mayor Protem?
I'm guessing I'm on the losing side of that naming battle, so don't spend too much of your brain power figuring out differently.
I I actually don't like the name either, so I, but I definitely like the idea, so if there's another name, I'd be happily, happy to support it.
We'll find a name, so. With nothing else, uh, thank you all for the presentation tonight and uh, yeah, we'll be talking again next month about this, so, thank you. Alright everyone, we're moving on now to Agenda Item Five, Reports from Boards and Commissions. From our liaisons, anybody have anything to report? Member Anderson?
I just wanted to give a um, brief report from the Sustainability Commission. Because we did have a number of citizens talk about the Water Efficiency Plan at the last council meeting. Which the Sustainability Commission also discussed and they sent, I know, a a list of recommendations for the Water Efficiency Pan- Plan. Um, and we did have a bit of a debate on one point on the plan, uh, there were on one point of their suggestions, which was. Uh, the Sustainability Commission initially wanted to um, implement a tiered pricing structure such that the more water you use. The higher the price gets to incentivize less uh, less water use and and um, they said they they found that the. Um, several members found that that actually it's the reverse of that now, once you hit a certain number of gallons, then the price actually drops. And we were wanting to really, and after the discussion, we basically figured that we don't quite have enough data to really know. Uh, I think maybe I got a council, I I passed on a council request to Assistant City Manager Dodd, who was at that meeting as well, but um, the question is. Uh, um, are are the question was are, is the tiered tiered um, pricing structure, who's that targeted at? Because I think it's four hundred thousand gallons per month, which I think exceeds what most residential or any residential customer probably is capable. Of using, so I don't know what that that particular tier is targeted at and if it has, you know, utility. If it's if it's useful for the city, if that's for industrial users or something like that, or, you know. Where it's to their, you know, they're using some water to cool down machinery, or I don't know what it would be, but. Something where we're not wanting to punish them for using more water for that process or something like that. Um, on the residential side, I objected to um, an increased tiered pricing structure. Because it doesn't take into account household size and I have a personal, a personal in- interest in in this particular. Particular one because um, my family probably, you know, uses less water per person. Um, but we use quite a high amount of water uh, in terms of the typical water customer, since a customer is a whole household, so. Um, anyway, that's just one of the big, one of the concerns that came up there. Most of the rest of the stuff, I think. Um, I'm sure the water, you know, the the water department will be able to incorporate in the plan to some some extent as well. Uh, the other update I had was from the um, Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group. And there is the the, there is a draft of an RFP for, I'm forgetting the term, the.
Navigation Center.
Thank you, Nav- Navigation Center. We had a discussion in our last steering committee meeting about, you know, about kind of the target, the the long term. Purposes of that, what the goals of the Navigation Center was, whether it's to get homeless people housed or whether it's to help. Provide services to our homeless population, but um, I thought there was a really, a really robust discussion on that. And they were gonna um, incorporate some of some of the suggestions from the Steering Committee back in the RFP, but I'm sure, of course, that was something that will come before council at some point. But wanted to make you aware that that is in process at this point.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward?
Thank you. Um, I I think with regards to some of the users for the water. I think that was things like Seven Up Bottling Company when they used to be here. I mean, obviously, they were a large user. Swedish is a large user. Anybody with a lot of. Landscaping is gonna be larger than your five little ones, so. Let's see, uh. I guess that was it, just responding to that. And is this Boards and Commissions too right now?
Just Boards and Commissions right now, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I think all we had or all I had was Parks and Rec. Recreation when we did the ribbon cutting over at Cushing Park for the skate park and the exercise area, I think. The exercise area was a nice surprise to a lot of us. And I think this skate park is pretty successful considering that. Even when the construction fence it was around it, it was pretty busy at night. So that's good. That's it, thanks.
There's constantly people there all the day, all day, so. Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so the Budget Advisory Committee meets tomorrow. Uh, they m- met. Uh, last month on the twenty seventh and I don't believe I briefed council on what they discussed at that time. Um, but they reviewed some of the ongoing capital projects uh, for twenty twenty two. And uh, this does bring me to something that I would like to bring up during Members' Choice, uh, which is um, one of the ongoing capital projects in twenty twenty two. Uh, the fiber rollout. Um, so I'll bring that up later. Uh, tomorrow, Parks and Rec will meet with the Budget Advisory Committee. Uh, to to review some of their ongoing projects and initiatives. Uh, I also attended the Region Nine Opioid Task Force Meeting um, as the representative uh, to Tri-Cities. Uh, for Tri-Cities and alternate voting member. There's similarly, uh, similar to what's going on with the Tri-Cities Homeless Initiative. Uh, there was a fair amount of talk about resource navigation. Um, we all know that substance use dovetails a lot with. Problems with housing and they run hand in hand in common and there's a a real need out there that we've identified for uh, supportive housing. Um, sober living facilities um, and transitional housing. There's a gap that I've seen identified through some of some of these meetings for people who. They're off the street or they're in treatment for a certain amount of time. And then they need to transition to the next phase and uh, sometimes they don't make that transition. So we're losing them after investing a significant amount of resources in them. I think there'll be further discussion on use of Region Nine opioid funds. Uh, to kind of cross the borders between the different groups that are all working in that sector. And resource navigation is a big part of that, so I'm looking forward to future developments on that topic.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And actually, I I wanna thank you for all the time that you're putting into the opioid task force. It's a lot of hours and you have. Really been providing us a lot of feedback on what's being talked about, so. I do wanna thank you, Mayor Protem, for being our voice on that that panel, so. And actually, if you wanna go ahead and just talk about the Budget Advisory Committee, I was gonna bring it up myself, but if you wanna go ahead and just lead off Members' Choice, um, please do so.
Sure. Uh, so I I have what I guess I'll call a concern. Um, based upon what I heard in the Budget Advisory Committee meeting uh, last month. Um, which is, we all know that when we passed the capital plan, uh, the, one of the things that we took out for twenty twenty three. Was an investment in city-owned fiber optic. And uh, so we still have about, according to the report, uh, roughly seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of funds that we've allocated. In twenty twenty two to advance that project. And my concern is that continued spending advancing that project in twenty twenty two. When we have already determined that we won't be making an investment in in twenty twenty three is actually going to be. Uh, the word that comes to mind is squandered, but that's probably a bit too strong. It's not the highest and best use of the money for this year. Um, so I would like to have a study session or discussion on that, uh, so that council can consider potentially even. Taking the action of sweeping that funding back and using it for some other capital project.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, any questions from council? I, City Manager, I know that we talked about this briefly on Friday, I wanna say. Um, and we just had a discussion on it, but can you provide a little bit more clarity for members of council about what was discussed during Budget Advisory and? Um, just anything on the fiber optic, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The the only thing that comes to mind is just, um, number one, we're open to that discussion. I think it's a good discussion. And we wanna make sure that we're, you know, operating within the will of council with regard to the twenty twenty three funds. Um, I think what, um, in my one-on-one with um, Mayor Protem Ward, we contacted Jeremy to just get some more information. And one of the things that he's just making sure that we're doing is making sure that we have a fiber optic network that provides. For the city, but not one that could be sold in the future for, you know, for us to operate a a municipal. Um, fiber optic network that would be home to business, so. We're putting that together. I think it would be a great discussion for us to have with you that what are the needs of the city departments? Utilities needs to connect all of their signals. We need to connect City Hall to the police station for redundant feeds, et cetera. Um, but to the Mayor Protem's point in our one-on-one, um, could that be done with private sector? Um, and we just pay long-term, you know, to to lease fiber. So, um, we're putting some numbers together eh, for that, um, Director. Uh, King is doing that and and we would welcome the discussion. I think it'd bring good clarity to staff as well.
Thank you, City Manager. Is it possible for us to have that conversation? I know that there was an RFP component that may be going out soon on this. So is it possible to have like a study session on this in mid-November?
Yes, we've put that RFP on hold.
Okay. Uh, Member Nooncamp?
Thank you. I just wanna weigh in on this topic. Um, thank you for for raising it. One question I had, City Manager Lewis, when that CIP came to us, and I think it's twenty million dollars is the project size. Is again, just clarity for how is that possible? What is the long-term strategy for how we would actually make that work? Cuz my concern is that in twenty four, we might have the same situation of like, what are we gonna cut? And it might be an easy cut and I don't, and I'm newer to the council, but have a strong sense of. What are, what are we looking at for the risk versus the opportunity costs here? And is there cybersecurity risks that we're taking by not making the investment? And so coupling both what is the value and then also. Strategically, how will we actually get it done would be really helpful in that study session.
Thank you. Any members of council against having this as a study session item? Looks like we can get that scheduled as part of the Mayor Managers Meeting uh, on Wednesday, but anything else, Mayor Protem? Thanks for bringing this up.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Anyone else? Uh, Member Russell?
Um, I just have a a couple of council requests. Um. Back in September, I did a council request on. Can council be provided aggregate exit interview information for public works? And the bottom line, on September ninth, I got the answer to three of the questions or two of the questions. And I did not get the exit interviews and then it was cleared off the schedule, so, um, because I couldn't find it. And um, anyway, I'm wondering if we can get the exit interviews.
Thank you, Member Russell. Um, are we asking for the individual exit interviews or just the aggregate information about?
The the aggregate information.
Okay.
A- anonymous. I don't wanna tie to anybody's name.
City managers? Did you wanna weigh in on that?
Um, Member Russell, during our one-on-one, I thought I confirmed with you that what we sent was what you wanted. In terms of the aggregate information.
There, there's three questions on here and I did, well. I mean, during our one-on-one, when we talked about that, it wasn't about the answer, it was about. What I wanted. That's what I remember. I mean, I could be wrong about that. But I don't, I don't remember seeing this until this week.
We'll get that back on the the schedule, but I'd I'd like to talk to you about exactly what you need because there's. We also talked about all city, we talked about public works, so we just need to clarify the question a bit.
Oh, okay, alright.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Member Russell. It's still your floor unless there was, well, actually, go ahead, Member Russell, and then I'll have Mayor Protem weigh in.
Well, unless he wanted to weigh in on that, I actually had a couple of other things that I wanted to ask.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna point out that when I, when I heard. Member, Councilmember Russell's request for the aggregate exit interview information, I didn't hear it as being restricted to the Public Works Department. Um, I I must understand that to be a citywide request. However, when the council request came back and it's CRT oh four eight five. It came back uh, restricted to the Public Works Department. And we were given vacancy information, but there wasn't any aggregated exit interview data provided.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Russell?
Um, actually, I, and I guess now I, you know, I didn't necessarily remember at the time. I knew I asked two or three requests and I I mean, I am interested in um. In all the exit interviews we've done, not just necessarily tied to to public works. Okay, then I have a couple of more things. Um, this is um. What services, I think I need answers to this information cuz I think there's a specific thing. What services are available to citizens who are victims of crime? And how do they access that information? And I I have some more specific things, but I I think um. If I get those general things, that will help. Um, and then my last one, and I I really would like to perhaps see this. In a study session, if that's possible, maybe we need to, maybe we don't. Um, and I'm, I think I may have asked this question a while back about rules for operating trash companies in Inglewood. And um, I I know we've talked about licensing in Inglewood and I know that um. I was told that if there's a state license, they don't necessarily have to have a municipal license. As a home rule municipality, can we not require um, for them to have. A municipal license as well as the state license? And the reason I'm asking that, is our licensing tied to the rules of trash haulers in Inglewood? And and by rules, I'm thinking specifically of alley pickup. Um, I think those were in t- trash haulers and days of service and things like that. And the reason I'm asking this question is. I have had several calls, plus finally, I got a postcard myself. And it just really kinda ticks me off. Um, because even though we voted against single hauler trash, I believe that um, perhaps the market forces are moving us that direction, whether we want to go that way or not. And the bottom line is, I believe we as council have the authority to establish the rules. And I believe there's already rules established that need to be enforced if a trash hauler wants to pick up trash in Inglewood. And I think that we need to address that sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anything else from anyone? Oh, sorry, Member Wink, go ahead.
I think we're crossing a quite a fine line by requesting personnel information um, in terms of exit interviews. And we can ask by department and ask for the aggregated amount. But the truth is, if we are, if the sample size is so small that we can't de-identify the data to the point where no one can assemble it and understand, okay, among these three public works individuals or these five people, eh, it's it's easy to understand that that's this one, that's that one. I mean, we might not be in a position to reveal that kind of information without violating someone's privacy. And I think legally, we're bound to protecting the individuals. Eh, I don't know, it kind of seems like we're crossing a line. And I'm concerned about that request and making it a public thing or publicly accessible um, bank of of downloaded data. So I'd really like us to think carefully about why we need that and and what we're really looking for and what really the best way to enable council members to understand what they need to understand while protecting the privacy of individuals on our uh, administrative team.
Thank you, Member Wink. Uh, Member Noon Camp?
I just wanted to weigh in on Members' Choice um, and just encourage and give some community kudos to Meg Donaldson, who is the co-leader of the Cushing Park neighborhood, who for the last few years have, has been frustrated by this vacant lot that has been at the end of her street. And over the last several months, she's been working with her neighborhood group, with the city, with the schools, with nonprofits to create change in that area. So I just wanna encourage council members, if you haven't driven past Floyd and Cherokee, that lot was beautified over the weekend with a brand-new mural, Little Free Library, benches, planters, a sign. Um, and they received funding, there was a grant, the Neighborhood Improvement Grant through our Neighborhood Resources Program that they got to do that work. They received funding from the Cultural Arts Dis- uh, Commission to purchase the art supplies. We had, they had probably twenty um, high school art students out there painting a mural over the weekend. They partnered with nonprofits. It's such an incredible success story of what community members can do to create change in their own neighborhood through the resources that the city is providing. I'm so proud of that group and major kudos to the neighbors who pulled that off. And if you haven't driven by, please do.
Thank you for that, Member Noon Camp. Number Wink?
A quick aside or or um, continuation of that thought um, is that Meg Donaldson has done even more. I mean, this isn't the first or second time she's stood up and represented the Cushing Park uh, neighborhood. Uh, I think she may have even begun to execute great projects for our neighborhood before our neighborhood um, coordinator took took office and and started the formal plans on behalf of the city. I may be lying there, but I I know that she's done cleanups of the park or orchestrated them, in which I've participated. But yeah, she really has done a tremendous amount of work um, and shown her real dedication to making the most of her neighborhood. It really makes me excited, too. Thank you for bringing that up, Member Noon Camp.
Thank you. Anyone else? And actually, I'll just uh, piggyback on what Member Wink stated. Obviously, uh, i- if there's any information that's gonna reveal the identity of anybody that is, that is, that has decided to leave the city of Inglewood, I like that information to be left off. Um, obviously, as part of the exit reviews, we want feedback from our employees on what we could be doing better. If we're doing anything that can uh, negatively affect that in the future, then um, then it's not something that I do wanna receive uh, and make public to the public. So um, that's where I weigh there. Obviously, I think City Manager and City Attorney, you guys are probably weighing that as well in terms of what information to provide. But just wanna make that clear as as my perspective on the issue, so. With nothing else, City Manager, City City Manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let um, everybody know that we had um, another fire, but this time at the recycling center um, at sixteen oh one West Harvard. This is a private um, enterprise that does strictly recycling. Um, we responded to that and did lose some water pressures. So if you got complaints from that, it's the hill, basically, from the neighborhood um, between Evans and Baker. And um, so we have gotten the fire under um, control though. And um, we're cleaning up about the time we started the meeting. Um, also, just wanted to thank everybody who worked for Trunk or Treat. We had a great turnout. In fact, we had um, lots of people showed up that did not register, so we're kind of looking at the process for that. Um, but better to have too many than too few. Um, this year, Avery Acres um, was the coordinator for that. He's a new um, recreation supervisor in rec and did a great job, um, but just had a lot of um, team participation. Uh, our interim Public Works Director's own department, um, the Fleet Division specifically won the competition if you went. They have all of these wild vehicles that we can't sell, like an armored vehicle, the old SWAT vehicle. We can't sell it, it's like illegal to sell. So they turned it into a bank heist um, exhibit, gave candy out, and everybody loved it. And they won um, yet again, although that's unofficial. But I think that was very clear to me that they had won by the voting. So um, thanks to everybody for their help with that, and that's all I have.
Perfect. With nothing else, uh, we are off next Monday night. Uh, so we'll see you guys on November seventh, I believe. And to those that celebrate, Happy Diwali Day. And thank you so much, and see you guys in two weeks. Good evening, everyone.